Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Bloomington Common Council Meeting for this Wednesday, November the 2nd. This is a regular session, and we will begin this evening by asking our deputy clerk to please call the roll.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Volin?
Here.
Sims?
Here.
Scamblerie?
Here.
Sandberg?
Here.
Rallo?
Here.
Flaherty?
Here.
Rosenbarger?
Here.
Pete Mont Smith?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. To summarize our agenda this evening, we do have several sets of minutes to approve, special sessions from 2021, followed by reports from council members, and then the mayor and city offices. We will hear two reports this evening, one from the Commission on Hispanic and Latino Affairs, their annual report, and then a status report on duplexes, ADUs, per ordinance 21-23. That is followed by council committee reports, and then our first opportunity for public comment. Members of the public may speak on matters not on the agenda this evening of community concern. They may speak one of the two opportunities, but not both. And that will be followed by any appointments to boards and commissions. Then we have legislation for second readings and resolutions. That includes ordinance 22-28, final approval to issue economic development revenue notes, and lend the proceeds for the renovation of affordable housing regarding Countryview Apartments, 2500 South Rockport Road, and Countryview Housing LP is the petitioner. The second item is related. It is ordinance 22-29, the ordinance authorizing and approving a payment in lieu of taxes, a pilot agreement with Countryview Housing, limited partnerships for Countryview Apartments. Then next, we will hear ordinance 22-31, to amend Title 15 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Vehicles and Traffic. This amends Section 15.12.010, stop intersections, to change a stop intersection location to a multi-stop intersection location. That will be followed by ordinance 22-15, to vacate a public parcel regarding a 12-foot-wide alley segment running east-west between the Beeline Trail and the first alley to the west-north of 7th Street and the south of 8th Street. This is peerless development petitioner, and this is an item that will be taken off the table before we proceed to discuss. Legislation for first readings this evening will include ordinance 22-33, to amend Title 10 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled wastewater rate adjustment, and then ordinance 22-34, to amend Title 10 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled wastewater/stormwater rate adjustments. We will have the second opportunity for public comment at that time, followed by a discussion of our council schedule before we adjourn this evening. So with that, let us address our minutes.
Madam President, I move approval of the following minutes. They're all special session meetings, May 4th, 2021, May 5th, 2021, May 6th, 2021, May 12th, 2021, and May 13th, 2021.
Moved and seconded. Are there any amendments to any of these sets of minutes? Councilmember Pete Mont Smith?
There were some minor corrections which have been made by the clerk's office, and I believe the revised minutes were sent out maybe an hour and a half ago or so.
All right, and so with those corrections that have been duly recorded and noted, could we have a, all in favor, please say aye of approving these minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, those minutes are approved. Now we will turn to reports from council members. I will start on my left this evening with councilmember Pete Mont Smith.
Yes, thank you. My only message tonight is, everybody who has not done so already, please go and vote. The future of our country and our democracy depends upon it. We have candidates throughout the United States who have publicly stated they believe the misinformation surrounding the election of 2020 and do not believe that President Joe Biden won that election, although there has been no evidence at all that there was any significant fraud. And these individuals are running, among other things, for Secretary of State offices throughout this country, including right here in Indiana. We have a candidate who is running for that office, who has been a comrade of those who almost overthrew our government on January 6, 2021, based on false claims of election fraud. And this is very, very dangerous for the future of our country. The Secretary of State, as you probably know, is in charge of elections in each of our states, and to have that person be somebody who does not uphold election results is scandalous and could really lead to the end of our democratic system. So please go and vote, and vote for people who will uphold our constitution and our democracy. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rosenberg?
Thank you. Just a quick note, my constituent meeting is normally the second Tuesday, but in this case it is Election Day, so I will be changing that to the third Tuesday at 5:30 on Zoom, and you can find that on our council website. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Flaherty?
No report this evening.
Thank you. Councilmember Rallo?
I have no report.
All right, and to the right, councilmember Smith?
I just wanted to mention I had a couple constituents call me this week and chat with me about the traffic backups on East Third. And since the state run, that's basically problematic for us to do anything or do much on that. However, I did send a note to the indot contact list and asked them for a response on if there's anything they can do, if they can give an explanation. And so if there's other members of the public out there that are really concerned about that sort of fact, as many of us are, I'm going to suggest that you go to the indot website, push your contact, and make a note in that you have a concern of the traffic slowdown, the traffic backups there. And I think probably the more of us that do that, the more attention we'll get, and perhaps we'll get a response from them. So that's all I was.
Thank you. Councilmember Volin?
Yes, a couple things. First of all, on a lighter note, tonight is the anniversary of the Cubs winning the World Series six years ago. We had a council meeting that night, and I was lucky that I got to, that the meeting ended in time for me to go watch it. So I know my colleague to my right is also a pretty big Cubs fan, but the main thing I wanted to, yeah, but the main thing I want to talk about was a peculiar thing that happened at the Parking Commission last Thursday, when we were presented with two new members of the commission. And there's a kind of a confusing thing that's happened here that is worth untangling, and I spent most of the past several days trying to untangle it. But in short, there is no short way to describe it. But there are no vacancies on the Parking Commission. However, we were presented with two alternate members of the commission. I made the mistake of assuming that they were being presented as advisory members, and that advisory members fall under one section of city code that says that a commission may choose to expand to have non-voting advisory members up to four, such as are on the Historic Preservation Commission. But no, they were actually, they applied, and they interviewed, and they were appointed to positions that are almost unique to the Parking Commission. They were introduced to the commission with ordinance 2111, which is five years after the ordinance that created the commission. In that omnibus ordinance that was a cleanup of Title II, the staff led by city attorney Mike Rooker proposed that we add language to the Parking Commission allowing for alternates. And the reason was that the person from Planning and Transportation who had to represent that seat often couldn't make it because he had many other meetings to attend, and they wanted to be able to have a proxy, another staff member named, to take their place. And so the administration thought, well, if we're going to do that for that ex officio seat, we should give that option to all the seats. And thus, nine alternate positions to the Parking Commission were born. But they weren't carried out until Mr. Rooker and Rick Dietz of ITS actually uploaded them to our internal webpage where people apply to, for commissions. And Interview Committee C, which I believe is councilmembers Rallo, Sandberg, and Pete Mont Smith, saw the vacancies and assumed that they needed to be filled. And so that's how we got these two alternate seats. So it was quite a surprise to us, because for the first time this year, the Parking Commission had a full complement of people. And secondly, it's since come clear from reading the code closely that alternate members do not get to participate unless the primary member, who they're the supposed alternate for, is not present. So they can neither speak nor vote at a meeting if the primary is present. So in other words, there was sort of a cavalcade of oversights that led to this situation. I have asked for several changes, namely that we suspend additional interviews for alternates on the Parking Commission, that we've removed from the website implications that the alternate positions are open, can be filled, I mean, until the council thinks about whether or not they want to appoint an alternate for every seat on the commission. I'm going to recommend that the two alternate appointments be rescinded, though, and that the Parking Commission move to create advisory seats, and that we recommend that the council then appoint them to be advisors so that they can take part in meetings regardless of who's present. Also, I eventually want to, want to recommend that we change the code so that alternate seats are only for ex officio, people who have to be there by virtue of their office, namely, a member of the administration staff and a member from the city council, so that they can appoint proxies. Because the experiment, when Mr. Rooker presented it, he said that this is something that's done at the BZA, and he said one or two other commissions. But actually, there are no other commissions that use alternates, only the BZA. And the BZA is quasi-judicial, and it's statutory, and this is not a statutory commission. So finally, you know, I'm recommending other changes to the process by which we interview. This is an unfortunate occurrence. Everyone was trying to do the right thing, but as a result of making those vacancies available on the site as though they were vacancies of the commission, because they technically aren't, then it led to this huge bit of confusion. So the difference between alternate members of a commission and advisory members is a little confusing. I'm happy to explain it to anybody, but this all emerged out of the past week, and I think that that changed the code, which was experimented on the Parking Commission, probably is an experiment that should be repealed. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer afterwards, after the meeting, or in a private meeting. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Sims?
Thank you. First thing I want to do is acknowledge and say that I totally agree with the comments of councilmember Pete Mont Smith on her plea and request to vote. And I know many have already. And on another day, in another talk, we'll talk about the term that all politics are local politics. And I think there is some truth to that, but I also think it's rather limiting just to have that thought. But that's the first thing. And thanks, councilmember Pete Mont Smith, for that reminder. The next thing I have to do is what we affectionately call the risen report of the Committee of the Whole. President Sandberg and my esteemed colleagues, the Committee of the Whole considered ordinance 22-31 on October 26, 2022, and we had six council members in attendance at that committee meeting. The committee heard from the councilmember sponsors of the ordinance, who had invited a member of the public to speak in more detail about the proposal. Councilmember asked questions about the proposal, heard public comment, deliberated on the ordinance, and recommended adoption of ordinance 22-31 by five in favor to one opposed vote. I'm sorry. Recommendation vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmembers Scamblerie?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to extend an invitation to my November constituent meeting coming up on Saturday. Mine are always on the first Saturdays, November 5th at 1:30 PM. We'll be meeting via Zoom, and the link is available, it's just a button that says "Join" at Zoom for CityCouncil.com. Certainly, the focus is on residents of District 2, but anyone from throughout the city or throughout the North Carolina for that matter is most welcome. Thanks.
Thank you. Now we are ready for reports from the mayor and city offices, and so first we are going to hear a report for the Commission on Hispanic and Latino Affairs. Welcome.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having me here. Good evening to everyone here in attendance and as well as online. My name is Pedro Ramirez. I am a commissioner with the Commission on Hispanic and Latino Affairs. And if you bear with me, let me just read this real fast. On behalf of all the members of the commission, we would like to thank Mayor John Hamilton and the City Council for supporting our efforts on behalf of the Latino community in Bloomington. And if you're not aware, the Commission on Hispanic and Latino Affairs works to identify and address issues that impact the Hispanic and Latino populations in Bloomington, especially in the areas of health, education, public safety, and cultural competency. Now, I do know you have received our annual report, so I will not bore you by reading the entire thing here, since I guess I know we have lots of things to do. But I do, again, appreciate the time, and if there's anything I could bring back to our commission, any questions, any requests, anything like that, I will definitely do that. So with that, if there is anything, any comments or anything?
All right, very good. We'll see if any member of the council have any questions. I do want to just say that today in our Team C interview committee meeting, we heard that there is an opening on the commission, and so we might want to make mention of that if anyone is interested in applying. You might want to say a few words about the commission, and when it meets, and the kind of activities that you're up to.
Yes, actually, this last, this month, we were able to have two new members, to add two new members to our commission. So I thank you, because I think they were council-appointed. So that's how I started, right at, right at the beginning of the pandemic. So I thank you all for that. And anyone interested in, in joining us, we definitely are looking for people who would like to help, as I said, in those areas. The Hispanic community here is a small and silent, in many ways, community here in Bloomington. But they are there, and I've talked to many of them, and they definitely have needs, just as all of us do. We have work, we have families, we have all these other needs. And fortunately, we're out of the pandemic, and so some of those horrible situations are gone. But definitely there's issues to address. For me in particular, I know lots of young, young people definitely could use some help with jobs and looking for employment in those, here in Bloomington. And I've talked to several who would say that if they can't, then they're going to move somewhere bigger, somewhere else, and it would be a loss, I think. You have some, some people I've talked to trying to start a family here, young, married, and expecting children, and, you know, they have to do what they have to for their families. But if anyone is, is interested, we do meet last Wednesday of every month here, and obviously you do have the Zoom functions as well. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any questions from council? Councilmembers Scamblerie?
Hi, thank you for the report. Just to extend the invitation, are there any event dates to which you'd like to draw our attention, either for El Marcado or for Blacky Brown Arts Festival, either for the rest of '22 or for '23?
Well, for '22, those have passed, and as, as we have just completed the, you know, Hispanic Heritage Month, which was another great display that we had just outside these, these doors, and it was a great display that was put up. And I know we will start to plan, obviously, ahead for next 2023. We're always looking for artists, and we're always looking for people who would like to participate and have ideas. Again, like I said, I know one of the things when we discuss this in our meetings is, we are very interested in bringing along younger, the younger generation. And so we have had some, some high school students that have come to, to a few of our meetings and are getting more involved. And, and so that's exciting to see, because I remember being that nervous and young, back too many years to count, I'm not going to do it. But, but it's great to see them involved and, and wanting to, to participate. And then, as Counselor Pete Mont Smith said, mentioned, and as well as Counselor Sims also did, you know, having our next generation participate in civic affairs and voting, and not just voting, but also paying attention to what's going on, local politics, state politics, national politics, is very important. So, so anything we can do to forge cooperative efforts with, with youth in our, in our community is something I'm very interested in, and I would definitely bring that back to, to our commission.
Very good, thank you. Anyone else from council? All right, thank you so much, Mr. Mears, and best to the commission. All right, and next we have a status report on duplexes and ADUs. And so with us this evening to present is Jackie Scanlon. And this is required by ordinance 21-23.
Good evening. Jackie Scanlon, Development Services Manager, Planning and Transportation Department. As mentioned, this is a report that is dictated by ordinance 21-23. So this council approved a change to the UDO related to duplexes and triplexes in May of '21, and that became law, signed by Mayor Hamilton in July of that year. The ordinance contained the following language. The Planning and Transportation Department will track requests and approvals for the uses amended in this ordinance and report those findings to Plan Commission Administration and Common Council every six months from the effective date. So that ordinance made duplexes conditional in our zoning districts R1, R2, and R3, and made triplexes conditional in the R4. The ordinance also required that conditional use approvals related to duplexes in the R1 through R3 would need to include a neighborhood meeting and be seen by the Board of Zoning Appeals as opposed to the hearing officer. The council also placed a 150-foot buffer around newly-approved duplex dwellings around which new approvals cannot be sought for two years. And the council also placed a cap of 15 per year on the uses in the districts R1 through R3. So we reported in February of this year that we had spoken to 13 people about possible duplexes in the R1 through R3. So four were before the legislation was passed, and then nine since that time. One of those was preempt, the discussion was preemptively stopped because the property owner had a notice of violation on file, which you cannot have a notice of violation on file with the department for the previous three years in order to be eligible to request this conditional use. And at that time in February, we had not had any conditional use filings for duplexes in the R1 through R3, or triplexes in the R4, and we reported that here. So since February, we have spoken to, at the time of the memo, 14 parties. So that was at the end of September about possible duplexes. The topics range from basic questions about whether or not one is allowed, to process questions, you know, about how you would go about finding approval for that, all the way to proceeding with filing. So a conditional use approval was granted by the Board of Zoning Appeals in August of this year for our first duplex dwelling in the R3 zoning district stemming from one of the 14 contacts that we had had since February. That approved duplex location, received permitting in October, and is under, is able to be under construction at this time. Additionally, one of the 14 inquiries was from a property owner within 150 feet of that property. So that person cannot go forward with their duplex until they wait out the two-year timeline that was put in by council. So since the time of the memo, which was again at the end of September, we have had one additional inquiry, and that petition, as well as another, are both on upcoming Board of Zoning Appeal, Board of Zoning Appeals agendas. So our second and third requests for duplexes will be heard by the Board of Zoning Appeals in the next couple of months. And we have also, as noting for the ADUs, we have received four ADU permit filings in 2022. So that brings our total amount, since that was added to the code, to roughly 30. And I can answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there questions from councilmembers regarding the report? Councilmember Volin?
Yeah, just to clarify, so you said that there have been 14 inquiries at the end of September since February, or all totals since the ordinance was passed?
Since February, and one additional since the memo. So 15 since February.
So basically, there were 13 in the first period, and now there have been 15, 14 in the second period, and there's one now that's starting the third period?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions? Councilmember Rosenberg?
Thank you, Ms. Allen, for your report. I wanted to ask, it is sort of going the other direction here, but I know we're keeping close track of duplexes and people who request any information on those. Do we also keep track of people who take duplexes or triplexes or quadplexes and convert them to single-family homes? I know there was one in my neighborhood recently that displaced three households from a triplex and turned it into a single-family home, so really changed the rental situation for those folks, and just wondering if that's something we track?
Sure. I'll say yes and no. It's not something we track particularly. The reason we're tracking duplexes is because it's dictated by ordinance, and that was something that we wanted to do so that we could track the impact, because there was so much concern from members on this council and members in the public about the impact of this use that the department was publicly saying we thought would be an innocuous addition to the code. But we do have access to building permit. You know, we issue certificates of zoning compliance for every building permit, so we could, in theory, dig up that information to find the conversions going the other way, if that was something that we needed to do.
Thank you. Thank you. Additional questions? Councilmember Flaherty?
Thank you, Ms. Scanlon. In terms of accessory dwelling unit uptake over the last five or so years, that's been allowed. What, what are you seeing as staff in terms of barriers to doing that? Is it mostly financing and, and access to financing? Are there other issues that are, that are coming up in the course of people's conversations with staff about that, that opportunity or that option?
Sure. I think in recent years, the answer would probably be mostly financing. Initially, when they were put in, you'll recall, they were also a conditional use approval. There were just some more sort of process things that needed to go through. Currently, if you can meet the code requirements, then you just apply for a building permit, and we go through the process, just like we would for any other building permit. So I think process-wise, I don't think that's as discouraging as it was at the beginning, but I do think that we did find that that was off-putting at the beginning, and that was something we brought to you all in our annual report, and something that was changed. Saying that it's, the financing is kind of just a guess on my part. I mean, we, we do talk to people, and a lot of times, their conversions, and so, you know, whether or not you already have some space that you think you can kind of utilize, it seems to be an issue as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember Volin?
Yeah, do I recall correctly that in 2017, when we first adopted ADUs, there was a limit on the number of ADUs? We just didn't have a reporting requirement? What was that limit?
I want to say, I'm not sure. There was a limit. I wanted to say it was 30, but I'm not sure, and I could look it up. But there was, we did report, we did do annual reports for the first, I believe, two years.
Right. I want to say that it was 30 as well.
Yeah.
So you're saying that at the end of '22, we finally reached 30 on that?
Yes.
From that initial foray into different types of units?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you, Ms. Scanlon. We appreciate the update. This time, we will hear from anyone with a report for council committees. Do we have any this evening? And seeing none, we are ready to go to our first opportunity for public comment, and this is for matters not on this evening's agenda. We will go ahead and make the appeal to people who may be watching on Zoom at this time, while we get a show of hands first from anyone here in chambers who would like to speak on matters not on the agenda. One, two, I see two, three hands. All right, that helps. Thank you, Mr. Lucas.
I think four.
Oh, four, okay. All right.
Zoom a chance to raise their hand to indicate they'd like to comment. You can find the raise hand feature under your
find the raise hand feature under your control bar by clicking the reactions tab or the more tab. If you're not able to locate that raise hand button, please send a chat to the meeting host to let us know you'd like to comment.
Thank you. And given that we may have some from the Zoom, let's say each speaker will have three minutes. So those of you here in chambers, if you would like to go ahead and queue up behind the podium, state your name, and you will have three minutes to make a comment. Thank you. And signing in, I believe, is part of the protocol, too. So there's a place for you to sign your name and...
Greetings to my fellow city council colleagues. I'm Jennifer Crossley, the Monroe County Councilor for District Four. I come to your meeting this evening as a member of the Community Justice Response Committee. For those that don't know, this is the committee that is currently in the county. That is a part of the talks of a new possible jail facility. However, that is not the only thing that we are primarily focused on, contrary to opinions or discussions that you might have recently heard. Some of us are truly actively having conversations and brainstorming ways that we can decriminalize those that are incarcerated in the county for mental health issues, substance use disorders, and those that are experiencing homelessness in Monroe County and right here in this very city of Bloomington, as these should not, nor should they ever be reasons why people should be incarcerated, full stop. This committee is open to the public and meets every first and third Monday of each month, starting at 4:30 PM at the Nat U Hill Room at the courthouse, and I invite my city council colleagues to come and participate either in person or via Zoom. Furthermore, I would like to invite the city administration to come to these meetings as well. As we collaborate with the city and county relations, let us all try to come up with concrete, maybe monetary, and true collaborative ways to provide feedback and suggestions. Not let's just talk about performative change by talking at people, or talking to, or talking down to people about ways that they should be doing things, but let's truly walk in the ways of transformative justice for the sake of our community members as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crossley. And is there any hand up at home on our Zoom screen?
I have one request from Zoom from, I believe, Kevin.
All right. Let's go ahead and take Kevin's comment.
Okay, great. Yeah. Well, yeah, I'm just glad to hear from Jennifer Crossley, and yeah, some people in my group have been attending these meetings. And so, yeah, I just really appreciate her comments. But I wrote up a thing, so I'll just read it real quick.
If you could state your name.
My name is Kevin Weinberg. I grew up in Bloomington and worked for CATS for years, and I've watched what happens in city council. I feel like I have an unusually good sense of what goes down. I know how easy it is to just like listen to the comment period within hours long, sometimes like five plus, six, seven hours long meeting, and ask something clarifying, or say something consoling, and then move on and continue with business as usual. So I was reluctant to speak for this reason. But I don't know many of you well now, so I wanted to give it a shot. I'm addressing something that's coming up before you in the coming months. That's what Jennifer referenced. Yeah, I guess I just want to say quickly, like, as a descendant of Holocaust victims, I'm aware of the tremendous pressure people are under to just do their job regardless of larger processes underway. Yeah, so with that in mind, I don't expect, like what I'm saying, to make much impact in the course of events. But again, I just don't know this body very well anymore, so I didn't, I don't want to make any assumptions about what your interests and ethical commitments are. So yeah, so I'm asking the council, and really anyone else listening, to take seriously the power you have to make interventions into the proposal to build a new jail at the Fullerton Pike property. And I'm grateful to hear that the CJRC is, is not fully committed in that direction. Yeah, I don't have time to explain my concerns in detail. Though if there's interest, I'm happy to forward some of the work myself and others are doing in the organization Care Not Cages to document these concerns. In short, the project seems rushed, poorly considered, extremely expensive, and against the spirit of care and community that we're moving forward toward in Bloomington. Building a jail on Fullerton Pike is not in the comprehensive master plan, and neither should it be a shameful mark on all of our place in local history. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Mr. Weinberg. And then here in chambers, welcome.
Thank you. I'm Jim Allison, and as many of you probably know, I've been worried for years, seemed like decades actually, about the problem of gerrymandering throughout the state of Indiana at all levels of government, including municipal government. And I've written letters about this and bored a lot of people about it, and complained with a lot of people about it. And I have to, for that reason, give you my sincere compliments for everything you've done recently about redistricting in our community. I know it's hard to do this kind of thing. I didn't participate in any of the discussions, but I'm well aware of how difficult this can be. And so I'm very grateful for, for the work you've all done. And I think you've done a wonderful job, and I thank you for it.
Thank you very much. Do we have another comment on Zoom before we have the next chambers commenter?
Yes. Next on Zoom is Renee Miller.
Thank you. It's Indigenous Peoples History Month, and I begin by acknowledging that we are on the traditional homelands of Native people, the Miami, the Potawatomi, and Shawnee, and all others. And I want to pay respect to the elders, both past and present, and thank them for our, their hospitality. I want to thank councilperson Crossley for bringing the topic of the possible new jail to everyone's attention here tonight. And to the person, I miss their name, from Care Not Cages, I thank them for their comment as well. It is not the place to, we shouldn't be putting people in jail that have substance use disorders and mental health issues. So I hope to see some of the people here from the city council in those meetings. So far, I've only seen one, and they didn't offer any comments. So hopefully in the future, we'll see some other people there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Now here in chambers, welcome.
Hi. My name is Mark Haggerty, and I think many of us are understanding that the history of this country has come into question, and people have become more knowledgeable about what actually happened here on this land, the genocide, the slavery that led to the present condition. But here, we have a, we have an antecedent in our local history that we don't understand what has happened, and we don't understand what's happening now. I came here as a young Marine, just back from Vietnam, and the Democratic Party asked me to run for precinct committeeman on campus, and Charlotte was my vice committee woman. And I did that, and we helped usher in this, this administration. But I noticed in 1980, 82, there was a corporate drive to change election laws all over the United States, and in Indiana, to take away the write-in vote, and to abolish all third parties, to get rid of every, all competition to Democrats and Republicans. And I resisted that and tried to write in a vote, and I spent a month in jail here, and one of my co-defendants spent a year in prison for trying to write in a vote. Now, I hear people, asking people to vote, well, you know, poor people don't vote, and you know, poor people don't have any candidates, so there's an issue there. So asking people to vote, I noticed last election, there were people lined up to vote four blocks long at the early voting place for a month. And people kept driving by, essential workers, of course, on their way to work. Can I vote? No. Three-hour wait? No. Have to get home to the kids? No. Essential workers couldn't vote. Well, I didn't hear anybody say anything. Well, I filed a complaint in the circuit court, and it went to Judge Kier. And instead of me being able to pull evidence and witnesses, which I had witnesses there, I was placed in an adversarial hearing with the county clerk, who maintained that that was an acceptable weight, even though places like Indianapolis had opened up six new polling places, including their city-county building on Sundays and Lucas Oil Stadium. Now, I just don't see a concern that people that are ordinary would be able to run for office or vote in this town. It seems like we have one party that I helped install, and it's out of touch with the life that I live and the life of many poor people that are on the West Side, who are being replaced by y'all. People want to walk down to this building and work, and we're losing our real estate to y'all. So anyway...
And thank you, Mr. Haggerty. You are at your time, unfortunately. I'm sure you have more to say. Thank you.
I don't want to get arrested again.
Thank you, Mr. Haggerty. Is there another commenter here in chambers this evening? Or anyone on Zoom? I'm sorry.
I see no more takers on Zoom.
Okay. And apparently, that will conclude our public comment this evening.
Madam, Madam President?
Yes.
Didn't Mr. MG, wouldn't we have a note about a presentation that was going to take place during this moment?
You're going to wait, wait for the end? Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. We will now move to any appointments to boards and commissions. Do we have any this evening? And seeing none, let us now move to legislation for second readings and resolutions.
Madam President, I move that ordinance 2228 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And will the deputy clerk please read?
Ordinance 22-28, final approval to issue economic development revenue notes and lend the proceeds for the renovation of affordable housing regarding Countryview Apartments, 2500 South Rockport War, Rockport Road, Bloomington, Indiana. Countryview Housing LP petitioner, and there was no committee recommendation. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance authorizes the City of Bloomington to issue economic development revenue notes pursuant to Indiana Code Chapters 36-7-11.9 and 36-7-12, in an amount not to exceed an aggregate, aggregate principal amount of $15 million. The city would lend the proceeds from the economic development revenue notes to Countryview Housing LP, an Indiana Limited Partnership and its affiliated partners or limited liability company for the acquisition, renovation, improvement, and equipping of the affordable housing development known as the Countryview Apartments at 2500 South Rockport Road in Bloomington. Country, Countryview Housing LP and its partners would fully indemnify the city and take full responsibility for payment of the note. The city would not bear any liability, ongoing obligation, or costs related to the notes. The city would act only as a conduit allowing the borrower to access capital at a tax-exempt rate and receive equity for the project in the form of tax credits. The renovations to the Countryview Apartments are expected to cost approximately $42,000 per unit, including new kitchen cabinets, countertops, sinks, I'm sorry, countertops, appliances, garbage disposals, kitchen sinks and faucets, new bathroom cabinets, countertops, sinks, toilets, mirrors, and towel bars, new interior doors, new blinds, sub, subfloor repair and mold remediation, new lights throughout the units, new flooring, asphalt and concrete repairs, trash compactor updates, gutter, downspouts, soffit and fascia repair, sanitary main drain, and some pump work. New exterior doors, freeze boards, and additional units will be converted to fully accessible ADA compliant units.
All right. Thank you.
Madam President, I move that ordinance 2228 be adopted.
All right. And with us to begin the presentation, we have Mr. Alex Crowley. Welcome.
Good evening, council members. I'm Alex Crowley. I'm Director of Economic Sustainable Development for the City of Bloomington. I'm going to be master of ceremonies a little bit because we have a number of people presenting. But with your permission, we thought we would combine the presentations for ordinance 2228 and 2229. The two are linked together, so rather than arbitrarily split it up, combine them. First, I'd like to thank the Economic Development Commission for their service, including Councilmember Flaherty. The EDC approved, the Economic Development Commission approved supporting the bond issuance and refunding transaction on earlier this, or I guess October 18th. So that passed there. They did not, by the way, have a formal role in reviewing the pilot, the payment in lieu of taxes, which is the second ordinance. So we'll start this evening with Larry Allen, who is joining by Zoom, who will talk a little bit about the bond process and also provide a little background on the payment in lieu of taxes as a, as a, as a tool that we're using. There'll be three members from the GLIC team, which is the petitioner, Adam Richter, who's Executive Vice President and General Counsel, to provide an overview of the GLIC Housing Foundation, Janine Betsy, Director of Tax Credit Development, to talk about the financing and deal details, Steve Taft, who will join also by Zoom, is a Service Coordinator for Countryview Apartments, and he'll talk about the plans for onsite social services of the complex. And they'll be joined by Chris Cashman from ICE Miller to answer any questions related to the bond. I will wrap up then with a quick summary of the, you know, the administration's support for the ordinance. And I wanted to thank Judy Sharp, Monroe County Assessor, for joining us today as well. So without further ado, I will start by turning it over to Larry Allen.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Allen.
Thank you very much, Alex. We've seen a few of these. These are economic development bonds. I want to thank our partners, obviously, in coming together on this, and also city council, just for your attention. This is for Countryview Apartments. This was actually the first resolution you all saw this year, was the inducement resolution for this particular project, which was Resolution 22-01. The structure of these is that the city acts as a conduit lending its tax-exempt status for economic development bonds to affordable housing developer, although the city does not bear any liability for those bonds. It stays with the particular project. In this case, the not-to-exceed amount for the bonds is $15 million and will be used, as we heard in the synopsis, to renovate these apartments. We've done several of these, as I mentioned, some of them through the RAD conversion process through the BHA, but also for other apartment buildings and affordable housing complexes throughout the city. This one is a little bit different. So just to quickly go through some of the process for the resolution of the bonds, and then go moving on to the pilot. As I mentioned, you all had approved the inducement resolution in 2201. This went then to, Countryview applied for YTEC credits, which they were awarded in July of 2022. The Economic Development Commission, as Alex just mentioned, held a public hearing on these particular bonds, and they issued their report. They issued a positive recommendation to council for passage. They issued their reports to the Plan Commission. The Plan Commission returned that report with no concerns or, or no problems. And now it's for final approval for you, which would authorize the closing of this deal and the issuance of, of the debt for the project. The part that makes this one a little bit different than what we've seen before is obviously the pilot, the payment in lieu of taxes. A while ago, I believe it was in 2000, maybe in 2016, I, you all, we had approved as a city evergreen, a similar pilot. That, that actually sunset in the Indiana Code, and just this year, January 1st, effective, the General Assembly brought back the code provision that allows for payment in lieu of taxes agreements for affordable housing specifically. And so that's what's before you as, as a component to the financing in this piece. There are some requirements, obviously, that it has to be affordable housing. It has to be approved. If there is an affordable housing use agreement, it has to be recorded. That is in existence for 30 years under the YTEC requirements. And then it basically, it fixes the amount of taxes that would be paid as opposed to an increased assessment amount. In this case, it would fix the taxes at $61,203.51 for, for 30 years. What this enables, the pilot enables some stability in the financing of the project, and also allows some of that money that would otherwise be go to the potential outlay for increased taxes in future years to be reinvested into the apartments. So that we have reviewed this, and we think that that's, it's a very good program for this particular housing development, and so we are in support of it. I'm happy to take any questions that you may have at the end of the presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. And who do we have next? Mr. Crowley? Thank you, Mr. Allen. And who do we have next? Mr. Crowley?
Good evening, councilors. Thank you. My name is Adam Richter. I'm the Executive Vice President and General Counsel for the GLIC Philanthropies. As Alex mentioned, I'm going to be giving a bit of an overview on who the petitioner is, who our limited partnership is. And I greatly appreciate the opportunity to do so because the GLIC philanthropies is not a traditional affordable housing developer. So the GLIC philanthropies as an organization is a, is an umbrella group of philanthropic efforts by the GMB GLIC family. And the particular component of the GLIC philanthropies that's at issue here is called the GLIC Housing Foundation. When you hear the name GLIC in certain, in central Indiana and hopefully down here in Bloomington as well, a lot of people think of the GLIC Family Foundation, which is a grant making organization that since its inception in 1983 has donated over $200 million to charitable causes. It's less well known that the GLICs have a housing foundation, which is itself a 501(c)(3) public charity. So it has the same sort of governance structure that you would have with any other nonprofit that you would traditionally think of. The mission of the Housing Foundation is twofold. It is to preserve affordable housing, quality affordable housing. And I'm going to talk in just a moment about how we accomplish that. The second goal is to improve the lives of our residents. And the primary way that we do that is through our Service Coordinator Program. We have an additional speaker who's on Zoom this evening. It wasn't mentioned earlier, I believe. His name is Steve Taft. He is our onsite Service Coordinator who provides social services at Country View. I will be talking about the Service Coordinator Program from a high level though, before I turn it over to Steve to ask about what he's doing specifically there at Country View. So back to the mission, preservation of quality affordable housing. The Housing Foundation targets apartment communities that we believe are at risk for one reason or another. Properties that need some TLC, properties that are conventional properties that are failing, but could be converted to an affordable housing use and be successful if run on a nonprofit basis. Or in the case of Country View, we have a property that is at risk of turning from an affordable housing community into a market rate community. So the goal here is that we would tie up Country View for 30 years, require that it would be an affordable housing community for that period of time. With respect to our, the social services component, how we better the lives of our residents. Since 2000 and, I want to say 2010, the inception of our Service Coordinator Program, the Housing Foundation has invested $11 million in developing a, a program that supplies each property within the Housing Foundation's portfolio with a onsite, the title is referred to as Service Coordinator, but they're largely social workers is the way that I think of them. And depending on the type of property that they have, they implement different programs to try to improve the lives of those residents. The universe within the GLIC Housing Foundation portfolio falls into family properties and elderly properties. And the strategies are different depending on what type of property that you're operating. Country View is a family property. So with family properties, the Service Coordinator is expected to work with each individual resident and determine where they fall along a number of what we call dimensions. Those are things like food security, education, access to transportation. There's 10 different dimensions that we measure people on when they first come into our property. We then try to take those folks from wherever they are within each individual dimension, whether they're in crisis or if they're thriving, and then move them up on each one of those dimensions. And that is what we expect of our Service Coordinators. On the elderly side, just to sort of put a bow on it, even though this is not an elderly community, the goal is to help the residents age in place so that their quality of life and the cost of their care are both better. It costs a lot less to have someone in a nursing home versus having them stay with us and having a Service Coordinator helping them procure the services that they need or helping them with Medicare or what have you. We have, as part of the investments in the Service Coordinator Program, we have over 70 Service Coordinator, Service Coordinators at our 43 properties. Country View is a 200-unit property, which we would typically staff with one, and that's what we've done. We have middle level management within Service Coordination that is responsible for making sure that there's quality control. And then we have a Director of Resident Success, who unfortunately was not able to join us here tonight. So we have an executor, an executive level position that's responsible for executing our Resident Success Program. So we're a different kind of animal, is what I'm trying to express through the Housing Foundation. We are always open to partnering with community partners on even larger projects. In Indianapolis, we have a housing, our Heroes Program, where we work with the VA and lower our leasing criteria to help veterans obtain stable housing. We've also partnered with an organization called Family Promise, which takes families in crisis, places them in our units. The Family Promise, the nonprofit, is the, technically the renter under those programs, with the idea that as they improve and stabilize their situation, that they would then transition to a lease directly with us and continue to work with our Service Coordinator to continue to advance their situation. That is the Housing Foundation in a nutshell and our Service Coordinator Program. I have not spoken very much about this particular property, however. And my colleague, Janine Betsy, is going to come up and speak about that. Janine is our Director of Tax Credit Development, and she's the one who's leading the charge on this particular investment.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for having me. I did have the pleasure of talking to you all at your first meeting of the year. Yes, I'm very short. Bring it down. So it's nice to see you all in person. When you were given an overview of the ordinance, it talked quite a lot about the repairs that we're doing, so I'm not going to focus on those. Country View is very well located by a lot of amenities. It's near the B-line. It's 1.1 mile from a grocery store. There's daycares nearby. There's other resources for the residents. Our current unit mix has 206 units. It does have 1, 2s, 3s, and just a couple 4s, just two 4 bedrooms. But, you know, folks aren't typically building the larger units for families anymore, so it's great to have those. Right now, we have 126 voucher holders that live in the apartments. So that's almost 62% of the entire property. And I was looking at the Bloomington Housing Agency's website, and it says they administer 1,300 vouchers approximately a year outside of their public housing or other RAD contracts. So that's almost 10% of the vouchers are living at Country View. We did sign up an agreement with the Shalom Center, so 10% of the units will be set aside for referrals from them. And they do get priority on the tenant selection criteria when they have folks, and we have an opening. We're super excited about making both significant interior improvements at Country View as well as exterior improvements as well. Could use a little updating and love replacing some of those fascia boards that around the door will look great when it's done. And we have honed in on the rapid rehab process. Will, residents will be out of the units for two nights. We do direct billing with hotels so that it's not an impact on the residents. And we do work intently with folks that have been there a while and may need help with packing or moving or other, they might have some mild hoarding problems, but we work with them to make sure that they're able to go through the process as well. We, the project will also improve all of the amenities to ADA accessibility, including the playground, the bathrooms in the leasing center, the services areas in the leasing center. So it's going to be a great improvement. And there will be four units that are fully converted to ADA accessibility. But it was difficult to find more units because the site has a lot of up and down and walk up and down. So we identified the four that we could do, and those absolutely will be done. The next component of our team today is Stephen Taft, and he is the one that is on Zoom that we're hoping you can bring up. He is our onsite Service Coordinator. He's really dynamic. He's well integrated into the Bloomington community. And once he gets up, we'll let him tell you about what he started and what his plans are.
Thank you, Ms. Betsy.
Hello, guys. Can you hear?
Yes, welcome.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you for having me. I want to talk about my background first and why it's amazing to work for GLIC. In 2016, I moved to Bloomington in 2015, but in 2016, I started to work at the Shalom Center, and it was through Friends Place. It was a PRN, and since then, I was the property manager at the Crawford Apartments and also became the Director of Center Programs for Shalom. And identifying the needs of the community, it got really tiresome, I would say. And the reason I say that is because I was also the lead supervisor at the COVID winter shelter that was off the B-line. After that, leaving Beacon, I was really excited to see the GLIC Commission and everything that they offer. I interviewed for the position and I, I got the position and then to great success, I got to see 10 people that I was, I was used to see sleeping outside doing everything else. And, you know, I'm really happy to report that they, they aren't surviving. They're thriving right now. And the big GLIC difference there in the Country View Apartments, what I'm really excited about, is the approachability about it, being met with resources where someone's at and so, you know, where they need to be. And then not only that, but we've also introduced a pet food pantry, which is also amazing as well. It's just, it's, it's been a huge honor working for GLIC. The, the improvements that are coming, I, in my opinion, are definitely due for Bloomington. And even today, the, the approachability of having a conversation with two people that I know that were houseless beforehand and asking how to register to vote was, was amazing. So I'm really excited to be a part of this. Very, very nervous having this conversation as well, but yeah, please take consideration.
Thank you very much. And again, for the wrap up, Mr. Crowley.
Thank you, Alex Crowley, Director of Economic Sustainable, Sustainable Development, again. So just to close and briefly, our objective, I think our shared objective is to retain quality affordable housing in Bloomington, especially in that part of town, which is probably going to see a fair amount of heightened development activity over the next several decades. Its proximity to a lot of amenities would lead that, in that direction. GLIC has indicated that without this payment in lieu of taxes agreement, that the project would not be able to continue. So it's an important one. And, and it's critical to the success of, of what they have in mind. So just to reiterate what you have in the packet, in the agreement for the payment in lieu of taxes, the city would, or the city county would, would continue to receive about $61,000 a year, which is the current tax bill. That would be fixed for the next 30 years. What we would for, as for a total of about $1.8 million over the course of the 30 years. What we would be foregoing because of the payment in lieu of taxes agreement would be about $100,000 of incrementally newly assessed tax revenue every year. So that would be about $3 million over the course of 30 years. Those monies that we would otherwise have gotten will be used to reinvest into the property, underwriting the renovations and then funding the social services programming and the ongoing maintenance and repairs. It also, as GLIC has mentioned, will provide budgetary certainty to them, which is helpful over the long term. That allows them to really predict what, what operating costs will exist and manage those at the property. So when we assess using public money and invest in an incentive like this, we tend to try to normalize it. We, as you probably know, we, there are a number of different tools we can use to incentivize affordable housing, whether it's the creation of new housing or the retention of old housing. And one way to, so we have the Housing Development Fund, Home Dollars, tax abatements, a pilot is a relatively new way that we can do it. Land value in the case where sometimes we own land value. So it's a little hard to compare these. The other thing that's difficult is that we are making assumptions about future tax rates, assessed values. So it's, these numbers that I'm going to quote to you are best guesses, given what we know. I wouldn't, they're not exact numbers and it's hard to predict the exact number. But in this particular case, if you do the math, on a per unit basis, the public investment is about $15,000 per unit. So that's taking the value of the abatement and then dividing it by, not the abatement, I'm sorry, the, the payment in lieu of taxes value and then dividing it by the number of units. So about $15,000 per unit is how we are thinking about this deal. And to give you a sense of where that range, how that falls within the range that we've looked at in the past, we tend to like to be in about, you know, $10,000 to $20,000 range. So sort of solidly in the middle of that range that we like to see for low income housing tax credit deals. The Beeline Heights Ped Core Project was a combination of different tools that we use there. That was $20,000 per unit. So this is less than that. Southern Knoll, over on the west side of town, was about $16,000 per unit in terms of the, the local public money that was put against that. Union at Crescent, which is a much larger development, was about $15,000, so about the same as this, per unit. And the retreated Switchyard, which is, as you know, going in at South Walnut, that was about $24,000 per unit. So this is below some of the ones we've seen. It's more or less in line with, with what we've seen. And it's exactly in the zone of what we want to see when we put forward public monies to invest. So all this to say, the administration recommends the, both, both ordinances to ensure continued affordability at Country View, and I will end there and open it up for questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And since we are going to be taking both of these as separate votes, let's begin with council questions on ordinance 22-28, which is in regard to the, the renovations and the wonderful presentations that we've heard about that. So let's start with council questions for any of the presenters this evening. Councilmember Volan.
Well, Madam Chair, I actually have a procedural question because if they're being presented together and we vote on 2228 and then the question goes up in 2229, that might change our thoughts on 2228? I mean, I don't expect.
So you, you want to have questions on both of them and then?
I just have one.
But then we will have to vote separately on each one. Okay, bye.
If you don't mind, yeah.
And I do see that we have Assessor Sharp here with us. I assume you're going to here make a public comment on which of the two ordinances? All of them. Okay, thank you very much for being here.
So yeah, I mean, it's just about the pilot. So just to, to dumb it down for me because like I'm not clear on it. Is it safe to say that they would have had to pay about $4.5 million in taxes over 30 years? But that what we're doing with the pilot agreement is setting it back to their current tax rate and just not increasing it? So it's kind of like a, a tax abatement. It's kind of functions like a tax abatement. Is that a safe way to characterize it, Mr. Crowley?
Yeah, so in the unlikely instance where they made all the renovations without the pilot, then that tax bill was estimated to go from about $60,000 per year to about $160,000 per year. So.
Per unit or?
Per year, right. And so by putting the pilot in place, we are, like you said, rolling back to the current tax liability and foregoing that increment that would come from the incremental assessed value over the period of 30 years.
And is, am I correct in characterizing it as sort of like a tax abatement in the way that it's functioning?
Yeah, basically, one of the advantages of a pilot is that you can actually go, a tax abatement for real property is limited to 10 years. So this is something that can go for a longer period of time, which ensures, you know, leverage across the 30-year period.
But I mean, like you didn't, you know, say, well, they have to pay half the taxes they would have. You just said it at this, at this level. So that's why it sounded like an abatement to me, which is fine. I just, I'm just trying to characterize it and make sure I understand fully what the pilot. pilot is for, but it sounds reasonable. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions? Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes, I have a few questions on the wording in the resolution, so they're probably for Mr. Allen, since this is all legalese. So we need to find, I guess, in the whereas clauses, that, first of all, the Indiana Code talks about financing and refinancing of economic development facilities. So is this considered an economic development facility in the legal sense?
Yeah, yes, it is, councilmember.
Okay, and then along those same lines, I think this is probably also hidden here because of Indiana Code. So it says the transaction will be a benefit to the health and general welfare of the citizens of the issuer, which I don't know how the issuer can have citizens, but could you explain what that means?
Yep, so the city of Bloomington is the issuer here. We do technically issue the bonds. That's how it borrows our tax-exempt status, so it's a benefit to the community, the community, so the citizens of the city of Bloomington. The recipient of the bonds here, the borrower itself, is Country View. So while we're the issuer of the bonds, they are the borrower in this context. And so, and the health, safety, and welfare, that's classic, kind of, for lack of a, the term of art is police state, but classic powers of the local body. So those are the touchstones in which all power from the city flows, and why that kind of language has hung over, it's throughout the state code and in our own ordinances as well. So that's why those are kind of the touchstone words that we go back to.
Okay, yeah, I just, citizens stood out to me because it could be a benefit to non-citizens as well. Residents would be more appropriate, but.
Yeah, okay.
If I may, I have one or two others just about the legal language. Then in Section 2 of the ordinance, it talks about, in compliance with Indiana Code Title 36, 36, Article 1, et cetera, two copies of the financing documents, okay, are on file office of the city clerk. Okay, that's, that's fine, I'm sorry. But there was some other mention of the city clerk and what their role is in this that I didn't quite understand. Trying to find it. Oh, yes, Section 4, "The clerk is authorized and directed to sell such notes to the purchasers thereof at a price not less than 97%." So what role does the clerk actually play? I mean, do they have to get involved with selling the notes?
No, councilman, and there should be bond counsel here, so they can always correct me if I'm wrong. So this is the clerk acting in her capacity as representative of the issuer of the city in this regard. So by just saying that we're selling the bonds, it's we're issuing the bonds, although in this case, you know, when we refer to issuing the bonds or selling the bonds, this is a direct placement. So a bank is committed to financing this project and purchasing all these notes. Notes and bonds can be used interchangeably here, as they are in the statute. So it's probably more accurate to say, you know, this looks a little bit more like a mortgage than it does kind of some of the other bonded issuances that we might do for like general obligation bonds or something like that. But in this case, we're saying the clerk is authorized to sell the bonds. It's just to say that you all are authorizing the issuance of bonds in the name of the city of Bloomington, and the clerk is acting as the representative of the city.
Okay, just wanted to make sure we weren't adding a job to the city clerk's plate here.
We are not.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Scambolari.
Yes, thank you. I had some questions. I've been really struck by the numbers that you shared regarding 126 voucher holders and 10% set aside. Can you say more about how you project that unfolding in the years to come, too? Those are some pretty remarkable numbers in terms of affordability.
Yes, so one of the things about the tax credit program, it does require you to accept housing choice vouchers. And so I think there, in my experience over the years, there is a, folks talk to each other, and so folks with vouchers that are looking for quality housing say, here's a place where you can go that will accept it, the fair market rent is not too high, you'll be able to afford it. Most of our rents are $100 to $150 below Bloomington's max rents, so they are affordable. So that kind of casual network talks to each other and says, here's where you can go. I think it also speaks to the challenge that some folks might have to find a place that accepts their voucher and uses it. So I do think that folks that come in, they stay, and that I think when we first purchased the project, we were right under 50%, and we've creeped up to that 62%. I just checked it yesterday. I was like, we have 126 now, so, and it's, it's great. It's stable, it's good for them, they're not paying more than 30% of their income. Bloomington PHA is paying the balance of, you know, whatever their dollars are at, and so that really says to me that 62% of the folks that live there are earning less than 50% of the area median income for Monroe County.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions from council? I actually have one for Mr. Taft, if we can get Mr. Taft back from, from his Zoom position. First of all, I was very, very impressed to hear that there's going to be an onsite social service coordinator, period. But then, when I heard that there were 206 units for one person, I was immediately glad that Mr. Taft has experience elsewhere in the community, because if you could, is he still available, Mr. Taft? Steve?
I am, yes.
And I hope you've heard my kind of ramp up to my question. You certainly are going to have the opportunity, I would assume, to make referrals to the community, to the social services community with respect to the coordination that you'll be doing for the individuals in the, in the units?
Definitely. Not only that, it's relationships that I've been fortunate enough to build in my previous positions. So that being said, no matter what someone's going through as far as being a resident out of that Country View, it's amazing to work with the people, whether it be Centerstone or New Hope, whatever else, to really reconnect and make sure that everybody's getting the most of the need from their services.
Thank you. And how do you deliver the services? Are you making unit visits? Are they coming to you, making appointments in your office? How does that work?
Kind of both, actually. The role seems to be somewhat new at a Country View, and, you know, the approachability was not the once there, and now it is. And so working with the guests and the residents from the apartment buildings, it's absolutely fun to reconnect with whatever services they need, and it's something that I've really worked with hard in the past half.
All right, excellent, thank you. Are there any other questions from councilmembers? Thank you, Mr. Taft. Councilmember Smith.
I think I have one broad question. How does this type of project, payment in lieu of taxes, how does that benefit the overall mission of the GLIC Foundation?
I greatly appreciate that question, thank you. It goes, I think it hits on both of the two prongs of the mission. One, where the best financial thing that could happen to an owner of Country View is that they would convert it to a market-rate property. They would flip it, they would change out the residence, and they would start, they could justify a rehab if they were going to be pushing rents and getting market rents on it. So we're keeping an asset affordable that if you were just purely profit motivated, this is not what you would be doing. You would be flipping this to market rate. I don't think there's any question about that. And I should have included this in my earlier comments, you know, and this relates to the pilot as well. You know, in a prior life, I did an awful lot of economic development work, asking for abatements and things like that. And I always wondered truly if the designating body or what have you didn't grant the incentive, would the project really happen? Like, would it happen anyway? And I think that that would be my number-one concern if I was in your position, asking that question, or, you know, being approached for something like the pilot. And this project has suffered over the last 12 months, not in terms of operations, that's all been fine, but the underwriting for the rehab has been very difficult because interest rates have been rising very quickly and our construction costs have skyrocketed. Just last week, we got an increase in our construction cost that we are penciling this property now to $0. So we have zero profit expectation, which is fine, we're a nonprofit, but it leaves no room for error. And so there's the possibility of, and even with the pilot, that's with the pilot included, the Housing Foundation is taking a risk that we estimate that we could lose up to $100,000 a year, and no organization, profit or nonprofit, is ever going to sign up for the possibility of 30 years of $100,000 annual deficits. So while this doesn't directly get to your question, I wanted to, I wanted to bring it up, because it's related to, it's related to the mission and how exactly mission-driven this one really is. Any affordable housing development or rehab, because the numbers don't work, because the rents are suppressed from what the market would ordinarily bear, has to gather funds from lots of different buckets. The owner is expected to put in money, you have the bonds, you have the proceeds from the tax credit, maybe you have something like a pilot that offsets your operating expenses down the road. That's the only way that it can get done. And in this case, the Housing Foundation, in order to make this deal work, has to put in $8.8 million of its own cash, which is unheard of. We would typically put in anywhere between $500,000 and $700,000 on a bad deal. In this case, we bought this property in November of 2021 with the idea that we're going to do a tax credit here, and we're lucky to have a board that's been willing to put their skin in the game to that, to that degree. We have not asked for a pilot before, and this is the first one, and like I said, it gets us to penciling at a, we're not expecting a loss if everything goes perfectly as long as we have the pilot. So as for the mission, and then, so I talked about keeping it, keeping the property from going to market. The way it aligns with the, with the mission on the other side is we're implementing these social services that weren't there before, and you've heard, you've heard Steve talk about those. So thank you for allowing me to drone on a little bit about the financials there.
Thank you for responding to that. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Additional questions from council? Councilmember Volan.
This is a small one compared to everything else that's been asked, but there was a statement that there was a grocery one mile away from this, which is the grocery?
Kroger.
I mean, all the Krogers that I'm looking at are at least two to three miles away. So I was wondering if, if, you know, the Walmart is 2.3 miles, the Kroger on the south side is more than two miles. I just, was there a particular grocery that you all had in mind with that 1.1-mile distance from?
If you don't mind, I'd like to let Steve, he's on site, and he can discuss that. Steve, if you heard the question, could you respond to that?
Absolutely, yes. Family Dollar is, I want to say, less than a three-fourths of a mile away from there.
Family Dollar counts as a grocery?
I'm sorry, Dollar General.
Dollar General, I mean, the dollar store counts as a grocery?
It's, yeah, absolutely. I would say that there's 25% of that building that's nothing but grocery.
All right, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Additional questions? I think I have one for Mr., for Larry Allen. We had a number of amendments that came to us recently. Do we want to just address those, or there's those fairly housekeeping issues that were adjusted just prior to our meeting this evening?
So some of the amendments that you all saw would have been to specifically the pilot agreement, just working that out. So the pilot agreement, just, some of them were adding details, such as the suite number for ESD. Some of them are also changing the way the agreement just memorialized its securitization. So instead of being a secured mortgage, in this case, it would be recorded, and there would be, the recording of the agreement itself would act as the debt instrument. Regardless of how that looks in the legal language in the agreement, I should just note that it is subordinate to the financer here. So it'd be subordinate to the note issuer of the bank in any case and in any scenario. And then the other language that we wanted to memorialize is GLIC's role in this as well. So GLIC is a nonprofit, and their requirements as a general partner in the limited partnership, just to memorialize the fact that GLIC has to keep this as an affordable housing as part of its mission, and make sure that that's memorialized in the agreement. So as long as they're a general partner in this deal, even if it extends past 30 years, then this housing addition would have to remain affordable.
All right, very good. Thanks for that clarification. Anything else from council? All right, let us now move on to public comment, and I would like to welcome Ms. Judy Sharp to the podium first to make a public comment on this, and then if you will hold for just a minute, we'll make the announcement to anyone at home on Zoom.
Yes, if there are other folks in the audience that would like to offer a comment, please use the raise hand feature to indicate you'd like to speak. You can find that in your control bar, under the reactions tab or the more tab. You can also send a chat to the meeting host to let us know you'd like to speak.
Thank you, and welcome, Ms. Sharp.
Thank you, Madam President and members of the council. I was speaking to a few of you before the evening, and this is, this is my 35th year in this position, and it's the first time I've ever addressed the council on behalf of a taxpayer. And I'm doing this because I have been working with the GLIC Foundation for, I'm not really sure how many years, but this isn't the first project that they have brought into Bloomington. The first one that I and my board, and I have Jack Davis, who is president of the Property Tax Board of Assessment, here with me. I'm not sure how much you all know what we do as the assessor, but people come to us, anyone can come to us yearly, and talk about their assessments, and your big commercial properties, your apartments, everybody comes in every year, and they're always asking to lower their assessments or whatever. And we deal with all of that, and it's no problem. The biggest challenge we always have are the people that first thing they walk in and they say, well, this is low income. And we start doing our due diligence, and they're not low income. The GLIC Foundation came to us quite a number of years ago and came in to the board, and I had no idea who they were or what they wanted. And you saw the presentation tonight. You can imagine when they came into the board, there was probably twice this many people sitting around the board, very professional, nice as can be, and I'm going like, wow, who are they and what do they want? This was on a property that you all are aware of. It's, I call it 17th Street Crescent Road, you know where that goes. On the right-hand side, it is an apartment complex that is now called The Reserve. When the GLIC Foundation bought this, it was Park something, I believe. I won't swear to that, it's been quite a number of years ago. And we started dealing with them year after year after year, and they came in and started talking, and it, once again, we're just going, nah, you know, you bought it for a certain amount of money, I think this is what it's worth. But they would come in every year and ask for a, you know, a percentage off of the taxes. And they would always invite us out. Well, this was one time, I could see there was something going on that we had never seen in Monroe County, in Bloomington. And so we took them up on it, and we went out to this apartment complex that wasn't really great. It had, and the police were up there all the time, ambulance and fire. It was constant problems, not a real good place to live. When the GLICs bought it, just like they're doing over here at 2500 Rockport, they went in as a group and started changing the whole lifestyle for these people. And the board and I went out there many, many times, many, many years, and we started with a 20% obsolescence. So we would take, take their assessment down by 20%, so it was 20% less taxes this year. They would come back in a couple more years and say, hey, could we have a little bit more? I'm paraphrasing, we don't sit around saying, hey, could we have more? But they would bring in stuff and invite us to come out again. I spent a lot of time out there, and so did the board, and we saw what was happening out at the, they changed the name, and I see that a lot in. out at the, they changed the name, and I see that a lot in properties that have a bad reputation. One of the things we have found in our business is that sometimes you have to change the name because the name has bad connotations. And we see it every once in a while that happened. They changed the Reserve, and when we would go out, it was like a holiday. I cannot explain. They were so excited to see us, the residents were, and what you had out there was, it's fully occupied as they all are, and it was mostly mothers with little children, not a lot of whole families. You know, that's what you see. The kids were happy. They were out playing. The mothers were so in, just, they wanted to show us their apartments because they'd been totally renovated. They were so proud of what they had, and they're taking care of stuff. It almost makes me cry because you don't see this in most places that we go into. One of the things, they did a whole bunch of stuff, really good stuff. They brought a police officer and gave him an apartment to live there because they had problems there. That made a big difference. I can still see the police officer, if the little kids got to know him. It wasn't officer-friendly, but it was their police officer. You know what I'm saying? They weren't afraid of the police. That place has a huge, I think it's a huge, what I would call a clubhouse. That's where everything happens. They brought in Head Start for the children, so the kids had a Head Start program. They had breakfast every morning for these kids, lunch if they needed it, sometimes dinner. And it was so sweet the way they did it. You don't want to make people feel like they're getting a handout, any means. You don't want that. You want people to feel like it's any other place that they would live. And we would always go out there, and they were serving either breakfast or lunch, and everybody's sitting around, and if the mother was there, they would serve the mother. It was no big deal, and we were so impressed by that. They had a computer lab. They had things that they did with the children. This Steve that is the head of this, he's going to have a huge team working with him there all the time, and they use the word "social worker." That is a very apt word. These people have a background in social work. What we did, what we did with the Reserve, finally, after quite a few years, we stopped at 60%. So they're only paying 40% of what their assessed value is, and it changes every year just like everything else does. But we settled on 60%. We haven't come back, and I think that was a fair, a fair deal. When they came to us about Country View, and what I know about Country View, it was really scary. It was a, it was a, not a great apartment complex. Once again, police, fire, ambulance, constant, you know that. I used to have to go out there, and it wasn't something I wanted to do. So anyway, after they came in and met with us, they said, "Please come out and see this place." So they had a, they had a afternoon function. And so the board and I and a couple of my deputies went out to see what was going on. I hadn't been out there since they bought it. They'd already cleaned it up. I'm not kidding you. The difference was night and day from what it looked like a year ago. You already see what the GLICs do when they walk in with this group of people. They had this huge party going out in their main area. There was a fireman, firemen with a truck, and all the kids were all over that. You know how it is. They had a big, huge bounce house for kids running around. They had a big tent set up, and you guys were asking about social services. This big tent was set up, and they must have had 200 boxes of pizza. I don't know if you ever got rid of them all or not. Never saw so much pizza. I figured everybody there went home with two or three big boxes of pizza that night. But all of the, so many of the residents were there, and this was a whole hours-long function. And what Jack and I did, we just met the people. We just walked around and introduced ourselves and said, "How's it going?" And they were so happy to talk to us about the changes the GLICs had done already. I could see the changes because they were out enjoying an afternoon with their children and not worrying about things. It was very obvious. I talked to one older gentleman that had been there for years and years, and he was manning one of the stations there, and we just started talking, and I said, "How's it going?" And he said, "Let me tell you." He said, "I've lived here for years, and I had a front door that never worked. It was not safe, and I'd asked the prior people to please fix it." Now, we're talking really bad, you know? He couldn't lock it, couldn't get it shut. He said, "Within three days, I have a new front door and a lock. First time I have felt safe." I heard this over and over. These are true stories. They gave you the nuts and bolts, and you can hear all of that. I was, I'm here tonight to support them because I've seen it, and I know they would love for you all to come up. Another thing that they had in the tent were all of the services that they have available all the time to all the residents there, and they make sure that the residents know that was happening. We had BPD sitting there or standing there with, you know, we had two female BPD officers talking to people. It was just, it is just an amazing thing that you don't see too much. And since I have gotten to know this whole, what this is all about, I've done my research throughout the state of Indiana. They have quite a few GLIC properties right here in Monroe County, in Bloomington, but those are the only two that they ever come to me for because these are not-for-profit, you know? So I could go on for hours because we have literally spent hours on these two properties. And if you all know me, you know I can talk for a long time. I know, James. I'm looking at you. It's not, it's not even midnight yet. Come on, guys.
Judy, we have several other things on the agenda.
I know, but I, please, just, it sounds like it's a done deal, but I want you all to know that these are the real deal, and what they're doing for the citizens of Monroe County and Bloomington, this is, oh, this is money well, well-spent. So thank you all for everything.
Thank you, Assessor Sharp. Do we have anyone from Zoom wishing to make a comment?
Not that I see, no.
All right. Anyone else here in chambers? All right. Well, with that, we come back to council. Any final questions or comments? And again, we will take ordinance 22-28 first before we move on to the pilot ordinance. Councilmember Volin.
I've seen a lot of pizza. It's just on campus, so I bet I take her point about how much pizza was out there. And clearly, Assessor Sharp is familiar enough with our shenanigans and how late we go to know better. But the only thing I wanted to say about this, which I'm very happy to support, is it's a shame that we have to rely on the kindness of enlightened private corporations and their foundations and that despite the goodwill of every city body in office, certainly the ones represented in this room, every county body in office, that we can't provide outcomes like this in more places, perhaps even to build new projects with like comprehensive wraparound public services and private amenities. I mean, this sounds like an opportunity that we're glad someone recognized and is fixing, but we all know we need more like this, and it's just too bad that we can't, as public entities, because we're limited by the way the state does business, can't come together in more way. We can keep looking, and we should be looking for more private investment like this, but I'm very pleased to be supporting this as we have all year. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments from council? Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank everybody from GLIC and from the city staff for the presentation tonight, and I'm very pleased to support GLIC in this, in this effort to keep Country View affordable. I think that's, it's such an important piece of our affordable housing puzzle here in the city. And just to add to the supermarket question, I know that many people from Country View take the bus to Kroger Seminary Square because that's my bus as well, so that may be a better place to get groceries than Dollar General. But anyway, so bus service is there, and I'm very pleased to support this and to have an opportunity to, to try to replicate all the success that GLIC seems to have had at the Reserve on 17th. So thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments? Councilmember Smith.
I just want to thank everybody for the presentation. I'm really happy to support this. There's a lot of really good people working with the GLIC Foundation, and the GLIC Foundation is, it's really great that they're in town to, and have acquired this property and going forward with it. Makes me feel really good, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else from council? Let me just say, this is such a welcome project. We do thank the GLIC Foundation. It sounds like all of your good work in the community is really paying off in terms of not only adding affordability to our housing, which is critically needed, but also livability. I mean, I'm so impressed with the social services delivery right on-site for the clients, and it sounds like there's a real sense of pride when people are living in places such as this that are well-kept and well-maintained and have the best interests of the people who live there in mind. So I am very pleased to support this, as I'm sure we all are this evening, so. All right. If there are no further comments from council, let's ask the deputy clerk to please call the roll on ordinance 22-28.
Councilmember Volin?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Scamblerie?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Ralu?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That passes 900, and let us quickly move on to ordinance 22-29.
I move that ordinance 22-29 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Moving second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 22-29, ordinance authorizing and approving a payment in lieu of taxes, quote, pilot, unquote, agreement with Country View Housing Limited Partnership for Country View Apartments. The synopsis is, Country View Housing LP, or its existing or to-be-formed affiliate, quote, developer, unquote, desires to rehabilitate and renovate Country View Apartments and continue its use as affordable housing within the city of Bloomington. In order to make this development financially feasible, developer wishes to enter into an agreement to make payments in lieu of taxes, quote, pilot agreement, unquote. This ordinance authorizes and approves the pilot agreement with the developer, and there was not a committee to pass recommendation.
Thank you very much. Now, we have already done a round of questions regarding all of this. Oh, sorry, you've got to do one more thing?
Yes, I move that ordinance 22-29 be adopted.
Second.
All right. Now, we will entertain any more questions if anybody has them, but we have kind of exhausted them, I do believe, in our first discussion. Anyone? Questions? Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes, I wanted to ask what the impact of a pilot is on other taxing units. So it's a reduction of the amount of property taxes taken in, and so I wonder if that has an impact on the county government, MCCSC, or other taxing units. Can somebody speak to that?
I'm happy to try to start out. Councilmember Piedmont Smith and others can jump in if they would wish. It does, it does, it would fix the rate, so it kind of operates the same a little bit as kind of the baseline of a TIF. Since we're capping this at a certain amount, all the units would collect their same pro-rata share of that amount. It just wouldn't increase with assessed value. It'd stay flat over the life of the pilot.
Okay, so the other units would, I mean, the total amount would be capped at the $61,000, and it would still be doled out in proportion like any other property tax?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else with a question? All right. With that, let's go to the public. If there's anyone else that would like to make a public comment about the pilot part of this ordinance. Seeing no one here in chambers, anyone?
If you'd like to offer a chance for folks on Zoom, if you'd like to comment, please use the raise hand feature, which you can find under your control bar by clicking the reactions tab or the more tab. And if you can't locate the raise hand button, please send a chat to the meeting host.
Thank you.
And I see no hands going up.
We see no hands. Let us come back to council for any final comment on ordinance 22-29. Councilmember Volin.
So if I understand correctly, the petitioner here is going to take the money that would have been paid in taxes and is going to guarantee that it all gets put back into the project, which is sort of what a TIF is supposed to do. So, I mean, as long as that's the case, then it's a, I mean, it's just sort of a way for us to guarantee that money that would normally get sent up to Indianapolis and then redistributed to us stays not just in the city, but in that very spot. So as long as that's the case, it's, you know, worth doing. We can't do it with every project in the city, but it's definitely worth doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for a final comment? Well, and I would, I will just say that with respect to our great need for affordability, what better thing for us to do to provide this additional assistance? And I think the case has been made very well that it is necessary in order for this to move forward, and so I do believe it's something that is a community benefit, for sure. Happy to support it. Anyone else? All right. With that, will the deputy clerk please call the roll on ordinance 22-29?
Stevens?
Yes.
Scamblerie?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Ralu?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. 900. Thank you to everyone who was here this evening, supporting this. Thank you. Now, before we move this forward, I am going to pass the gavel over to our vice president here, as I am a co-sponsor.
Do you want to introduce it?
Let's introduce it first, and then I'll turn it over.
Very well. Madam President, I move that ordinance 22-31 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Moving second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 22-31, to amend Title 15 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled, quote, vehicles in traffic, end quote, regarding amending section 15.12.010, stop intersections, to change a stop intersection location to a multi-stop intersection location. The committee recommendation of October 26, 2022 was due pass 5-1.
Thank you.
Madam President, I had a question about the report that was delivered earlier, if that would be appropriate. Now, I expected the report to be given when the ordinance was introduced as opposed to during council report.
That was my understanding, too, and we just didn't have an opportunity to coordinate before the meeting started. I don't know if Mr. Sims would like to make that report again for the interest of, okay, the Horizon Report feature was, would be more appropriate to be done right before the introduction of the matter, but thank you for that.
I meant more specifically that I had a question about the report.
Can we complete the introduction of the legislation?
I think it's been introduced, has it not?
Well, I didn't make a motion for its adoption.
But that's not what introduction is. It's been introduced.
Very well. I think questions could come later.
Well, it's a question about the report itself, which follows introduction.
Fine. Do you have a question?
Thank you. I didn't hear mention of staff's input on the ordinance, which is a little surprising given the recommendation of a majority of council members and committee members, so I was curious what staff had to say about the ordinance last week. Thank you.
I think Mr. Ralu is right that it needs to be moved to adopt unless there's another motion that a member wants to put on the table. We need to move to adopt, and then we can have the discussion, which I'm looking forward to. But Mr. Flaherty?
Traditionally, with committee reports, we have done that, I believe, after introduction. The report's been delivered, and if folks had questions about the report, they could do that. I don't see why adoption, a motion to adopt is needed. It doesn't matter. We can move to adopt first, but I still have my question. Thank you.
I will move to adopt ordinance 22-31.
Second.
All right. And with that, we will return to the question that's been asked about the report, as to why staff was not in appearance at the committee of the hall meeting.
Well, I can answer, and that's better addressed by our administrator and our attorney. I will say, and he'll explain why staff was not there, and I think he'll also explain the Horizon Report as we did it, even if I may have done it. It's the first time, so I may have had it in the wrong spot. However, six of us were at the committee of the hall meeting, so I think it was adequate, but Mr. Lucas may be better to address that.
And again, the question is, was there any staff present at the committee of the hall? And there was not. And so if you would like to, Mr. Lucas, explain that the, about the reasons.
Yes, I'm happy to weigh in here. First, just to address Councilmember Flaherty's point, our local code calls for the chair of the committee of the hall to report the committee's recommendations. I believe that's what Mr. Sims did. So to the- So to the extent your question is about the substance of the meeting, I think the sponsors might, might be the best folks to respond to questions on the proposal. I can certainly speak to city staff's knowledge of the ordinance. I know staff was aware of the ordinance and was aware that it was going to be discussed last week. I don't believe the sponsors nor council staff extended an invitation or requested that they attend last week. I hope that they felt they could if they wished to and wished to weigh in on the ordinance, but to the extent the council expected them to, to attend, I wanted to say, I don't believe anyone requested their attendance, not to say that they couldn't have, but I don't believe anyone asked them to.
Thank you. I guess from a procedural standpoint, this is just surprising to me that we are making a traffic safety engineering decision and that we didn't ask staff to weigh in. I mean, from a procedural standpoint, does council staff normally rely on ordinance sponsors when council originates ordinances to make that request? Is it, I'm just a little confused, to be honest.
I think it depends on the specific proposal. Here, I had conversations with our city engineer, who stated that his position was laid out in the, well, I shouldn't say he, I believe a different staff member wrote the traffic commission report from the July Traffic Commission, and that staff's position was communicated in that report, which was included in your meeting packet.
Okay. Thank you.
Are we ready, are we ready to proceed? Yes, thank you. Why don't we begin with the sponsors? Councilmember Rallo, I believe you wanted to begin?
Thank you, Chair Scambolari. Appreciate it. This is, ordinance is cosponsored by Councilmembers Sandberg and Smith. And I'll just briefly make it a little introduction and then pass it over to Stephanie Hatton, who has an excellent presentation. This ordinance is a resident-initiated ordinance. It is to create a four-way stop at the intersection of Sheridan Road and Maxwell Lane. It is resident-initiated. I find it has overwhelming support of the residents in the neighborhood. But I think it's really self-evident and apparent if you, if you encounter this intersection that it presents a hazard. And the hazard is principally about a line-of-sight issue, looking to the west of the intersection. So drivers on Sheridan, for instance, are required to, drivers on Sheridan are required to stop, Maxwell drivers are not. For drivers on Sheridan, encountering that line-of-sight problem, they can anticipate really the speed of the cars that are coming over the crest of the hill. Now, the data says that the vast majority are going the, the speed for those people to anticipate, but they don't know. And so it's the outliers that really are, are the problem here. And there is significant traffic on that, on Maxwell. So when you're stopped at that intersection, say going eastbound from turning, turning from Sheridan, you're going to accelerate quickly to avoid a possible conflict and a collision. If you do so, you are accelerating into what exists to the west, or I'm sorry, the east is a crosswalk at Mitchell, a designated crosswalk. So this is a very confusing situation as it exists now. The aim of the four-way stop is to create order in what is a very problematic intersection and create safe crossing for pedestrians. Although this doesn't enjoy the, the recommendation of staff, and Director Seabor is here, so he can address it, but we've been in correspondence, and I appreciate Director Seabor and his staff meeting us on site and discussing this. But his conclusion was that he doesn't have any significant concerns if an always stop is installed, given the unique characteristics of the, of this intersection. So let me now just introduce Stephanie Hatton, who is a resident close by. She lives adjacent to the intersection, has a detailed presentation and that demonstrates the need and context.
Stephen, if you just let me know when I can share. Okay? Hi, my name is Stephanie Hatton, and I want to start by thanking everyone who's here tonight for coming, for being present. I'd especially like to acknowledge Councilmember Rallo, Council President Sandberg, Councilmember Smith for cosponsoring this ordinance, Councilmembers Flaherty, Piedmont Smith, and Rosenbarger, Vice President Scambolari, Councilmembers Sims and Volan. I appreciate your time and feedback thus far. I'd like to thank Andrew Seabor, Director of Engineering, for his engagement, and all city staff for their attendance tonight. Finally, to my neighbors, many of whom are joining us in person or via Zoom this evening. I live at 1414 East Maxwell, just to the west of the Maxwell and Sheridan intersection, with my husband, Brian, my four-and-a-half-year-old son, Benjamin, and our menace of a dog, Stella. Those of you who know her, know she is. I am originally from Bloomington. I went to high school and college here, and every day for many years, I drove my mom to and from work through this intersection. I know it well, and I think by now we all do. Before I begin my slide presentation, I'd like to speak a bit to some comments raised recently that have questioned the justness of this proposal. I hear and I respect the point at the heart of these comments. But, and with all due respect, where I live and any inferences made as a result of my address should not be relevant to this conversation. Any resident, regardless of where they reside, should feel comfortable exercising their civic right and expressing to local government their concerns about public safety. Because activism and advocacy can and should be encouraged and facilitated across the socioeconomic and sociocultural spectrum. Yes, we need to talk about equity in this community. Yes, I live in Elm Heights, and yes, I have been able to devote my resources to this effort barely. Had I not been in a position to extend these resources, I would have given up long ago because frankly, this process has been nearly prohibitive. And that is a big problem. That's an error in process. I don't slip brown envelopes, and I wait my turn. I have worked my way through the only system currently afforded, including an initial presentation at, excuse me, the traffic commission. I've initially undertaken the resident-led traffic calming program, and I've requested an engineering study. Viable alternatives have not been given procedurally and literally, including at the traffic commission meeting, when those no's came in thick and fast. That's an error in process. Metaphorically, if you ask me for a wrench to fix a leaky faucet, and I only ever offer you a Phillips head screwdriver, and continue to insist that it's the one and only appropriate tool to fix your sink, that's an error in process. So let's look at the process and how we can revise it so it's fair, inclusive, and collaborative. And let's think outside the proverbial toolbox. Let's be productive, please. Let's work together efficiently toward a solution without judgment or bias. Any resident in the city should have the assurance that if they have a concern, they can contact the appropriate representatives and that they will be heard, not dismissed. Progress happens through empowerment, not discouragement. I feel so much discord. But through an objective and a heartfelt consideration of this safety issue at Maxwell and Sheridan, we actually have a chance to flip the switch, right? And find a point of agreement. Because I think we can all agree that this intersection is dangerous and that something needs to be done sooner rather than later. And I will now present some information about why my neighborhood feels strongly that an always stop should be an integral component of making this intersection safe. And so here is a picture of the intersection. Let me be clear. What is our goal? Our goal is to improve safety at this intersection. Our request is to stop traffic at this intersection to help achieve this goal and indicate right-of-way. Fact number one, appropriate stop signs, stop traffic. Assertion number one, the unique characteristics of this intersection make this a necessary and appropriate place for an always stop. Fact number two, and this is a quote from the engineering report given on the 27th of July, "Staff acknowledges the unique traffic pattern at this intersection and does not have significant concerns if an always stop is installed." Assertion number two, installing an always stop at this intersection would help improve its safety. Our area of focus is the one-mile stretch of Maxwell Lane between Henderson and High Street. The intersection is circled in red. Currently, half a mile of Maxwell is unencumbered between Highland and High Street. We have a limited sightline issue at this intersection that extends approximately from Eagleson to Mitchell. If we talk about our sidewalks, we have an area of Maxwell for a quarter of a mile on the north with no sidewalks, and an area for three-quarters of the mile to the south with no pedestrian infrastructure. What we do have resembles something like this. Obstructions, non-compliant curbs, and in the example of the image on the bottom right, that is actually the non-compliant ADA ramp at this intersection. We also have no parkway or road verge, like the strip of grass that is usually between a sidewalk and a street. And so here's a view looking west at the intersection. If we look at our east-west corridors through this neighborhood and the traffic features, I've indicated here every instance of an always stop, a speed bump, a striped crosswalk, and there is one traffic signal location currently. We all live in Bloomington, so I, I think we're aware of the prevalence of stop signs. Something else I'll say in relation to a comment that's come up recently, if stop signs just don't work, then we have 1,913 problems to solve. Because that's how many stop signs we have in the city currently, give or take. That statistic was from 2018. Here is a graphic of what we hope to propose. So installation of an always stop at the intersection with appropriate stop sign-ahead warnings to the east and the west. Something similar to what's currently in place at Rogers Road and Snotty Road. This is gray. It's actually two sets of signage, so one indicating a stop sign is 500 feet in advance and one again at 300 feet. So plenty of, of warning is given. If we look at our neighborhood and we see the technical north, south, and east-west corridors highlighted in blue, I also want to point out that this intersection facilitates an important north-south shortcut, as well as a north and east shortcut, and has done for, since I was driving my mom to and from work. This intersection also facilitates two bus routes, MCCSC and Bloomington Transit, both run routes through this area. I have indicated where the old MCCS bus stop used to be. It was at this intersection, and it was moved east due to parent and bus driver safety concerns. Speaking to that, MCCSC, Bloomington Transit, and the Bloomington Fire Department have all indicated no opposition to an always stop here. I have talked, I've reached out and spoken to their representatives. MCCSC Routing Coordinator Ed Lavender has indicated strong support for the always stop among drivers. Again, the bus stop had to be moved because of safety concerns. I just want to talk a little bit about demographics. I'm looking at a 48, number of 48 affected housing units in this area, and these are based on my observations, so these actual results represent the minimum, to my knowledge. AHUs with children under 18, nine. AHUs with adults 65 or over, 16. AHUs with disabled or mobility-challenged individuals, four. AHUs with pets, six. We were asked earlier in the summer to consider what was unique about this intersection. So why? Why, why should we be talking about this? So I want to run through some of those observations. And compare our intersection with this intersection a few blocks to the west, which is Maxwell and Woodlawn. So the total area of the Maxwell and Woodlawn Avenue intersection is 1,143 square feet. Maxwell and Sheridan, twice that amount, 2,297 square feet. The crossing distance from west to east at Maxwell and Woodlawn, 34 feet. It takes me seven seconds to cross there. At Maxwell and Sheridan, east to west, the distance is 58 feet. It takes me 15 seconds to cross. Crossing distance at Maxwell and Woodlawn, north to south, 32 feet. Takes me six seconds. And Maxwell and Sheridan, north to south, 45 feet. Takes me 12. If we look at the physical characteristics, again, Maxwell and Sheridan versus Maxwell and Woodlawn, I think you can see that there is quite a difference. We have a, an odd angularity at Maxwell and Sheridan. These streets do not bisect. The turn radius is so exaggerated that at the moment motorists, many motorists traveling west on Maxwell and turning north onto Sheridan do not feel the need to, to signal. It's treated as an off-ramp situation, adding to the confusion. And it's just such a large and weirdly shaped intersection. Here we are at Maxwell and Woodlawn. That's my dog, Stella. We are looking west. It's quite an intimate intersection with clear sightlines. Here we are at Maxwell and Sheridan, also looking west and pointing out the lack of a parkway and road verge right where that off-ramp is located. Heading east on Maxwell, up the hill toward the intersection, we have a grade of 8.3%. And I will mention grade just in reference to, to speed bumps. There is no federal standard for the application of speed bumps on grade. But recommendations are, they're only appropriate on a street of a grade of 8% or less, and many jurisdictions adhere to that maximum. But others follow a lower value. Delaware, 6%. Minnesota and Pasadena, California, 5. Proceeding up the hill further, we're at Eagleson and Maxwell, where we have grades of 6.25% and 7.3. Heading up toward the crest, we're at 5.2. On the other side of the crest, we're at 5.2. And now I'm frozen. Okay. Now we're at the intersection, and we have a grade, we're heading down the hill toward the east, we have a grade of 6.25. I also pulled this image in because it's representative of how most motorists treat this intersection when trying to head east after proceeding south on Sheridan. They have to pull out so far before feeling comfortable to pull into the roadway and proceed because they cannot see east, or west over the hill to see what's coming. And here I am in the middle of the road, and I'm looking west, and this is the view of a car cresting the hill. and this is the view of a car cresting the hill from the pedestrian's point of view. The Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, the MUTCD, Guidance for Always-Stop Installations, states that intersections should, not shall, meet one of the following. An interim measure while awaiting traffic signal. So that's not applicable here. We're not asking for a stoplight. Five or more reported crashes in a 12-month period that are susceptible to correction by a multiway-stop. And this point was indicated by engineering as not applicable. I want to touch briefly on the reported crashes aspect. There have been crashes at this intersection that have not been reported. And I also want to point out that in waiting, this is a super reactive approach. And I would really appreciate something proactive. The guidelines also indicate minimum volume thresholds, also indicated by engineering as not applicable. There are conditions, thresholds warranted by MUTCD. But what are those versus a residential reality? What are the volumes at the numerous other intersections in this residential neighborhood and throughout Bloomington that feature always-stops? How did they qualify? There are jurisdictions, cities of Anaheim, Concord, and Escondido, California, that have drastically lowered their volume thresholds to account for the reality of residential traffic, as well as to take into account unusual physical characteristics of intersections like poor sightlines and geometry. Furthermore, as part of these volume thresholds and as part of the study, pedestrian, bicycle, and vehicular volumes were to be measured. And I believe in this instance, not all were. The MUTCD, in addition to those on the previous slide, the MUTCD lists several considerations that might influence the decision regarding the appropriate street upon which to install a stop sign. The first four that I've highlighted in blue were not acknowledged in the July 27th report. The final three, highlighted in red, were indicated by engineering as not applicable. And I hope over the coming slides that I might ask you to reconsider those characterizations. Stopping the direction that conflicts the most with established pedestrian crossing activity or school-walking routes. The established pedestrian crossing route is indicated by the blue line, and the yellow arrows indicate the most common directions, so east to west. People make use of the sidewalk here for general movement from point A to B, and this is the route that students use to walk to Rogers, Binford, and to and from IU. Again, we have no parkway or road verge at this corner. The need to control vehicle-pedestrian conflicts near locations that generate high pedestrian volumes. Again, the blue line represents the route channeling the highest pedestrian volumes. The pedestrian red arrow, that person heading east must look behind them to try and anticipate what's coming over the hill. They have to look east down Maxwell, also to anticipate. And they need to look north on Sheridan to try and avoid any of the cars that have to pull out so far because they cannot see over the hill. The yellow pedestrian arrows have a similar issue heading west. You have to contend with the hill. And if, for whatever reason, you would like to cross south, again, the hill prohibits, really prohibits that safe crossing. Stopping the direction that has obscured vision. I think by this time, it's quite clear. It's east to west because of the hill. Stopping the direction that has the longest uninterrupted flow approaching the intersection. In this case, that would be the section of Maxwell between High Street and this intersection, which is approximately 1,700 feet. Locations where a road user, after stopping, cannot see conflicting traffic and is not able to reasonably safely negotiate the intersection unless conflicting cross-traffic is also required to stop. So we have this behavior of drivers heading south on Sheridan who want to enter the intersection in order to travel east on Maxwell. They reach the stop sign, they proceed, they proceed, they hinge out, they inch out. They're looking, they're looking only up the hill because they don't know what's coming there. And then they go and they rev it and they're, before you know it, in the intersection and approaching that crosswalk, where there may or may not be someone ready to cross. While we're here, I would just like to note that it would be great if we could repaint the actual stop line on Sheridan, as well as the crosswalk, because it has faded. The need to control left-turn conflicts was indicated as not relevant. But as someone who lives here, this is just one big left-turn conflict. There are, in fact, four left-turn conflicts. Every direction you travel to this, to and from this intersection presents a left-turn conflict, all due to poor sightline. So let's think about some different considerations. We would love to have a stop sign here, but what else could we do? Could we do some visual narrowing with paint? Could we do a painted bike or multi-use lane with parking? Could we delineate parking spaces to give the impression that the road is narrower? Could we, I call it painted encouragement, to encourage drivers to slow down? Could we have some hill-blocks view signs where the speed is lowered in that specific location because of the lack of visibility? Here are two examples. Can we have some flashing "your speed" signs perhaps? And finally, and this would be the most invasive and long-term, potential reengineering of the intersection, a new design for bisection, crosswalk aprons, new sidewalk on the southeast, which would then link up to Mitchell, and could also allow for a north-to-south crosswalk, and then the replacement of the ADA ramp to make it compliant. We deserve to cross the road safely. Stopping traffic creates a safe crossing point. Creating a safe crossing point at the intersection of Maxwell and Sheridan is the right way to go. And I just have another brief narrative. Thank you for your time. Positive change in our community must be the result of a communal effort. And progress must be achieved through listening to and acting upon a respectful and collaborative dialogue. Consensus takes time, and time is money. Consensus is expensive, but investment is wise and building it is the right thing to do. My neighborhood is requesting an always-stop so that we have a safe place to cross the road at this unique location. Simple as. In order to create a safe place to cross, vehicles should be, should have to legally cease, not just slow down. An always-stop is a customary, common sense, convenient, and cost-conscious means of making the intersection safer for all who use it, regardless of age, ability, or chosen form of transportation. And I even think of it as a compromise. An effective solution that can be implemented now while we move down parallel tracks to find additional complementary solutions as resources allow. Further to these rationales, an always-stop removes the question of liability from this equation. Currently, who is liable for an accident here if it occurs? Is it the driver of the car that has hit the cyclist because both assumed the other would yield? Is it the pedestrian who got in the way of the car that turned but didn't signal because of the off-ramp? Or is the city now liable because this concern has been on the boards for 10 months and no action has yet been taken? I am, by training, an art historian specifically in the, and I will use quotes liberally, widely-followed field of English medieval manuscript illumination. Art historians are taught to adhere to certain methodologies. Rubrics, which is iconography, previous doctrine. In addition to these methods of evaluation, I also learn to search for the humanity behind an artwork, to consider the lived experience that informed an otherwise anonymous work of devotion. In other words, to question the rubrics and the recommendations and seek instead the informative value of observed nuances. And this intersection and broader area of focus is indeed nuanced. We lack basic pedestrian infrastructure for half a mile along a widely-traveled roadway characterized by poor sightlines with a residential, within a residential, walkable and walked neighborhood. This unusually wide and angular intersection sits adjacent to a blind hill, over which people cannot anticipate oncoming traffic and over which drivers cannot anticipate pedestrians. These circumstances make pedestrian safety tentative at best for most individuals, let alone for those who are mobility, sight, or hearing impaired. We have been asked time and time again to consider, to prove, to give testimony, to defend, to persuade. Why here? Why is this location so deserving? Quite frankly, to plea. And I will do that. I hope I've demonstrated that this intersection does warrant an always-stop so that we can emphasize a safe crossing point at Sheridan and Maxwell. We were given the engineering department's assurance of neutrality on the installation of an always-stop and confirmation that doing so would not cause harm. Yet the report of July 27th states that, quote, "Staff has concerns with the potential of establishing a pattern of installing always-stop control at locations that do not meet guidelines." I read this statement as a desire to avoid setting precedent. Might we all take this opportunity to set a different precedent? To acknowledge that each intersection, and therefore each always-stop request, is tinged with its own unique characteristics and should be examined as such? To honor the city's duty of care, to, quote, "address public safety and work with residents on safety concerns", to engage in a dialogue, to listen, to respect lived experience, to enact true change for our community. May that be the precedent that we set. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Hatt. Before we go to city staff, I'd like to come back to sponsors and see if they wanted to. Thank you. Let's refrain from ongoing reactions. Do the sponsors have any additional comments? Co-sponsors, I should say.
Well, I'd just like to note that it is, I think Ms. Hatt hit some very important points, and that is that it is a confusing and problematic situation. And what this supportive ordinance 2231 for forest provides is order where there's hazard. Order where pedestrians are provided safer passage, where cars and bicycles are afforded the rules of right-of-way so they can sort out to prevent conflict and collision. And it's, and as she noted, stop signs is the simplest and most efficient way to bring order to this intersection. So that's all I have. Council President Sandberg or council member?
I have nothing more to add for Ms. Hatt. It's just a wonderful presentation and so compelling. It's a simple request. I think many of us are looking at this as a do-no-harm situation with respect to what staff's recommendations may have been from the report. And I feel very compelled by resident-initiated requests that are as well researched as this one is. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. I just, as a co-sponsor, I drove out to the intersection today. And I was there from about 3:20 to about 4:20. I counted 35 cars drove by. There's a 25 mile-an-hour speed posted limit. Nobody was close to 25 miles an hour. They were all 35-ish. One person drove by about 50 miles an hour. There were about eight or 10 pedestrians, a couple bikes. I stood there and watched four people look left, look right, and really hurry across the road. And then I walked up and down the road. And the issue I have is that it's, it's an older-designed street, so it's really wide and it does promote higher speeds. So I didn't, it just seems like we have to do something. If the neighborhood thinks it's unsafe and feels it's unsafe, we should be responsive. You can't see people from above, from the west. You can't see people walking on, across the road. And from below, looking west, you really can't see the cars coming until they're at the crest of the hill or over. So the goal, as Ms. Hatt says, is to get us to stop there. And that's what stop signs do. So I think we meet the goal with this kind of a proposal. So I'm really, you know, happy to support it and want to promote citizens being, us being responsive.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to city staff now. Do we have a response or a comment, Mr. Seabor, I believe?
Good evening. Andrew Seabor with City Engineering. I believe Director Robinson from Planning and Transportation is also present online. I know Corporation Counsel Beth Kate was also planning on attending but is not feeling well this evening. So she's not here, but I think has had some conversations. I do not have a formal presentation. I do believe that what is in the packet, what was presented to the Traffic Commission, well represents the engineering department's conclusions and analysis of the intersection. I also do want to highlight that Traffic Commission did also have a very healthy discussion. It, I think, did end, I would say probably fairly abruptly at the end of the meeting because I think there was also a, we had a long discussion. And city council meets immediately after that meeting, so I think there was some pressure and we didn't even get to other things on that agenda. So just want to recognize there was a lot of discussion there. And the Traffic Commission did vote, I think it was five to two, in support of the recommendation in the Traffic Commission report. I think a lot of what was presented, I mean, everybody, I want to say, supports things being safe. We want things to be safe. We think it should be appropriate for people to walk across a street and feel safe. Like, we, I think, all share these same principles and goals. A word that I always am nervous with using is the word "safe". What is safe? What is unsafe? Those are tricky words to really try to define and have a shared definition of. The Traffic Commission report identified a number of metrics that we have, that we are required to follow. They are recommended guidelines. They are not requirements, as was accurately presented. But all of those metrics were not met. There is no reported crashes at this intersection. There is a hill that does limit sight distance. That is a fact. For most measured speeds, there is sufficient distance for people to stop and avoid a crash. But there are people that speed exceedingly to which they would struggle to stop. So that potential exists. So back to the word of "safe", you know, is this intersection unsafe? That's such a tricky, loaded question for me to answer as an engineer. Anytime there is a car on a road, there's a risk of something happening. If this intersection that has had zero reported crashes is considered unsafe, then we have a lot of intersections that are very unsafe in the city. And so I'm more interested, very concerned just that we establish what are those standards or thresholds that we're looking at as we evaluate these kinds? as we evaluate these kind of requests? Because in one of my onsite meetings with residents, and Councilmember Rallo, I think, was there, I certainly observed some hesitation for people at that intersection, having a difficulty judging gaps and when it might be okay to cross the street. But I think probably the most concerning incident that I believe I remember witnessing was actually at the adjacent intersection at Mitchell when somebody had honked their horn and there was what some people might call a close call. So, you know, is that intersection also unsafe? Well, we put investments... I think the Council Sidewalk Committee sponsored some improvements to make that intersection better for people to cross as well. And so just, you know, wanting to think holistically, we get a lot of requests for things across the city, and to be mindful of what the rationale and justification for potentially doing something at this location versus any other location that we get in the city. So I actually spoke a lot more than I was expecting there, but I'm happy to answer any questions. That's mostly what I'm here to do. But yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Seabor. Let's come to council for questions now. Councilmember Flaherty?
Thanks. Thank you to the ordinance officer for bringing this to Ms. Hatton for your traffic presentation. And Mr. Seabor, I have a couple of technical questions.
Councilmember Flaherty, can you pull your mic a little closer? We have some trouble hearing you.
Sure. I was just thanking folks for their work on this around the chambers here, and had a couple of questions following up on some things Ms. Hatton mentioned that I was hoping to get clarification from Mr. Seabor. One was, there was a slide that noted the four criteria in the MUTCD with respect to always stops, and engineering department's report that noted they weren't applicable or not met. And then there was a following slide that had a mix of blue text and red text and said that there were four guidelines that were not acknowledged by the engineering report on July 27. And I wonder if you could speak to that at all?
Sure. No, that's a good question. The engineering report touched on the MUTCD-recommended considerations for where always stops should be considered or are being requested. There's other sections of the MUTCD that provide considerations for where to place yield or stop signs, period. So many intersections, and not necessarily here in Bloomington, but some jurisdictions will have a grid network of a residential neighborhood without any traffic control. So it's sort of the rules of the road on who's supposed to yield to who. And in some instances, there's a desire to more formally determine which road should have a yield sign or a stop sign. So not both roads, but which road. So some of those other criteria are more for consideration of where you might put a two-way or one-way stop control at an intersection that doesn't currently have stop control. And I would also say some of those considerations, I think, are very similar to the considerations of the always stop, like are there pedestrians, significant pedestrians, are there limited sight lines? So there's some overlap in those criteria.
Okay, thank you. And a related follow-up on the point of, what's the term of art? Let me identify it here quickly in my notes. Left turn conflicts. Could you speak to that at all? And why the engineering report's conclusion was that that's not applicable here? What is a left turn conflict? Thank you.
There are... There's potential intersection configurations where certain left turn maneuvers just cannot physically happen with certain types of traffic control or configuration. So in this instance, like, it is just a very large intersection, and all left turn maneuvers are possible. Like, there's not like a conflict where one left turn might not... I can't have a... I don't have a specific example in mind, but that text is for a situation that just doesn't exist here. There might be like a five-legged intersection or some really obscure geometry where that could be more relevant. This is a pretty typical... Not... but there are some unique features, I think, to it.
Okay, thank you.
Let's go to Councilmember Sims.
Thank you. Actually, I was looking for the Traffic Commission report because I don't really remember its content. So I guess I'm just going to be direct. What is staff's response, either in support or not support of this legislation?
Sure. Good, direct question. And it's one that, I guess, to be fair with Ms. Hatton and others, I've tried to indicate a desire to be neutral on this topic. But ultimately, like, when it came to Traffic Commission, as a member of the Traffic Commission, ultimately you have to vote yes or no. So my recommendation, the Traffic... the engineering department's recommendation is not in support of an always stop. And that's consistent with the Traffic Commission's vote. But certainly, at the same time, I do recognize that there are some unique situations or considerations that are worth considering.
Go ahead.
Other than always stop, Traffic Commission, were there other considerations for other options, hopefully, to meet what we're trying to do tonight? What else was discussed?
I think, to be fair, and I would let others speak as well that were there, there wasn't that much discussion at the Traffic Commission about other options. I think we had some discussion after that meeting onsite with some community members to go through some of those. But just off the top of my head, and Ms. Hatton hit on some of those options that would be out there, would be a more reconstruction of the intersection. It is a very large intersection. If we were redesigning an intersection from scratch, it would not look like this. Traffic calming has been an option. Those are two. I think she touched on a few others with different signs and pavement markings or things like that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sandberg.
Thank you. I do appreciate that you're... You know, the definition of "safe" can be really difficult. I think it's kind of clear from hearing from the neighbors. They don't perceive that to be a safe intersection. But my direct question to you is, would a four-way stop here make that intersection less safe? I mean, barring you're not recommending because there may be other things you think would be better here, but would it be less safe with a four-way stop?
That's a very fair question to ask, and one I just am nervous to answer. Knowing that there have been no reported crashes, what is more safe or less? Like, that's just a hard question to ask. I think, as the staff report suggested, I don't have significant concerns if it became an always stop. And as I have noted in various meetings, my biggest concern would actually be in the short term of when we make a change, if one is pursued, those first several weeks or months, those will be the months I would be most concerned that there might be a crash because we're changing patterns that people have grown accustomed to over time.
And again, I appreciate the need for metrics and having criteria that meet thresholds. But do you have any opinion about the reported neighbors who are living on that street and seeing maybe there aren't no reported crashes, but they have seen some, and they have seen close calls? And so that does not have any bearing, I would assume, with your recommendation?
Yeah, I have certainly sympathy if there have been crashes like that. Is, I guess, it's just a good, maybe, reminder to community members or anybody watching that it might be a headache, but if there is a crash, to please call the police department and file a crash report because that is just a really helpful tool and metric for this type of evaluation, but so many others too. So, and it may be beneficial if there was a crash, if you have insurance and things like that.
Councilmember Rallo?
Yes, just to follow up, Mr. Seabor. Because we were discussing this through email, that you had your concern that of the potential short-term increase in crash risk as traffic patterns change due to a change in traffic control. Isn't that true of anything that we deploy? I mean, if we remove five stop signs on Seventh Street, that certainly increased the hazard, right? In the short term? And there are ways we could address that, it seems to me. Where the proposed stop sign will be accompanied with stop-ahead warning signs in either direction? And could we temporarily put up flashers or something to essentially indicate to people who are accustomed to just going through that that's not the case?
Yeah, no, great question, and suggestions built into that question. But if this ordinance was approved and enacted, I mean, we would do all that we could to make sure it was implemented as best it could with advanced signs, potentially putting flags or other devices on top of the stop signs to raise their visibility, and even working to see if we can get like electronic message board signs. We found those to be especially helpful as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, is Mr. Robinson on the call? Because I have a question about the neighborhood traffic calming program that goes through the Department of Planning and Transportation. I understand from Ms. Hatton that initially she and a neighbor had pursued traffic calming, but then, after speaking with more neighbors, this was actually not the preferred way to go. But if the residents were to pursue traffic calming, how would that work, and how quickly could that work?
Can everybody hear me? This is Scott Robinson, the Director of Planning and Transportation.
Yes.
Can you hear me? Yeah, thanks for the question. I mean, that is accurate. With the resident-led traffic calming program that was initiated by Ms. Hatton in this area, and there was a point in time where they didn't meet the minimum threshold to move forward with the traffic calming, as I understand that process. So the decision was not to pursue that because, as you are aware, tonight, many of people are in support of something other than traffic calming and support of four-way stop. So that's kind of the process of how, I guess, how it's arrived at this point in time from the neighborhood perspective. I can't speak to that because I have not been directly involved with that effort. I will say that this section of road, in the presentation that was provided, there's been many efforts that we've worked with the neighborhood to address various concerns. There with council sidewalk committees, built sidewalks in this area. We've put a crosswalk just east of this four-way stop to deal with students going to and from school. So again, there's a willingness to work with the neighborhood and address various concerns that we've been dealing with over the years. So that's my observation with the neighborhood traffic safety calming program that we've initiated.
So, and maybe Ms. Hatton can speak to this too. So the initial traffic calming request did not proceed because there was a certain buy-in required, and they did not meet that? Is that right?
Yeah, that's what I believe. I've been told that there just wasn't enough interest for them to move forward. So it really never proceeded beyond that. But I can't speak specifically to that because I haven't been involved with it. Our former staff member has resigned and was involved in that. She moved on to a different position. But that's my recollection of what happened with that request.
Thank you. Ms. Hatton, is that... Can you confirm that that's what happened?
So I would have been required, out of those 48 affected household units, that map came from Mallory Rickbyle, who was previously with Planning and Transportation. So out of those 48 AHUs, I would only have been required to collect 14 signatures. That's not 14 households or homes. That's 14 people. So like, me and my husband. Those are two. So 14 out of however many people live in those 48 units. I could have done that very easily. But it became apparent very soon after I started the initiative that my neighbors didn't... This isn't something they wanted. And it wasn't something they felt addressed our issue, which was our need to cross the road safely. And there were many reasons they gave me for not wanting traffic calming devices. And I will note that in this instance, traffic calming, at least in my understanding and my questioning to Mallory, solely meant vertical deflection. So any kind of speed bump, hump, cushion, et cetera. That was what was available. It's a once-yearly process. If you call outside of that window to apply, you're told, "I'm sorry, we're no longer accepting applications at this time. Please reach back out next year when the cycle is reopened." And we just didn't feel that this was something we wanted to pursue. I wasn't comfortable, as one resident, going against that sentiment. It didn't feel right. And it also doesn't feel right to me to implement a permanent change to the roadway that then could and would be likely to divert traffic onto another street, like First Street. And then my problem becomes someone else's problem. And all of that together was enough for me. And my co-sponsor, Devon Stein, who's not here this evening. She's picking her daughter up from the airport. But that was enough for us to say, is there another way?
May I ask one other follow-up to Mr. Robinson? I'm a bit surprised to hear that vertical impediments were the only suggestion given because I know in different parts of the city, we've had other methods of traffic calming, like narrowing the street, bump outs and such things. Are those all part of the toolbox for neighborhood traffic calming?
Generally, like everything, those other things cost additional money. And so it gets into how much money is available types of consideration. So I would say that it's not out of the realm to consider those. But when you look at the neighborhood traffic calming program, we were looking for more easily, quickly deliverable improvements. When you start dealing with other things that you mentioned, curbing and sidewalks starts triggering stormwater and other things that we have to look at. So again, we were trying to look at improvements that wouldn't take as significant amount of resources to implement. Certainly not out of the question in a broader sense.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, in terms of cost, I think that vertical deflection has been referred to as a kind of cost-effective means of slowing traffic. I don't really want to get into the calming traffic aspect because, again, we're not asking to calm traffic here. We're asking to stop it so we can cross. There was another resident-led traffic calming program that I think has been approved for the western end of Maxwell, between Henderson and Woodlawn, that would see the implementation of four speed bumps in a four-block span at a total cost of $48,000, $12,000 per speed bump. So if you're looking at a half a mile section of Maxwell that you would like to theoretically calm, I don't know how many blocks that is. I don't know how many speed bumps would be proposed. But I feel like that tends to move outside the realm of cost consciousness.
Additional questions? Councilmember Rosenberg?
Thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Hatton, for your presentation. I think this question will be for Mr. Seabor. I was just looking at the map, and... So, I mean, I can understand the idea of wanting to stop traffic. I think in general, what's happening is we want safe crossing for bikes and pedestrians in these places. I know a lot of students, young students, go through the pedestrian passage on South Clifton that connects up from Maxwell to First Street. How would this stop sign impact that intersection? Would it make it easier for children to cross the street there?
So just to make sure, so you're asking, how would a stop sign at Maxwell and Sheridan help pedestrian?
Help, right. So many students use that route to go to school. It's kind of like it turns into that pedestrian path south of Clifton on Maxwell and connects to Maxwell. How would that stop sign help those children?
I guess I probably want to look at a map, but big...
It's one block west of High Street.
So how would, sorry, I'm having a hard, how would the stop sign at Cliff?
Mr., I'm going to interrupt, Mr. Lucas or Deputy Attorney Kulak, is it possible to put a map up?
Thanks.
Sorry, I know it's very specific, but yeah, it's, hopefully that can happen. It's like maybe four blocks east of where the stop sign is proposed.
So I think just, we're talking about the stop sign request at Sheridan and how it might affect the crossing at Clifton?
Yes.
I, my just initial gut reaction is I don't expect that it would affect the intersection four blocks away, but it gets more to the question of why one intersection and not another intersection and trying to just think through what the criteria being considered is.
Yes, that, there is the map, but that, I understand what you're saying, that a stop sign down there is not necessarily helping a very popular pedestrian and bike route for young students, like, you know, K through six going to Rogers Benford, right? What's, what would be the best way to help people cross the street at all of these intersections where people go above the speed limit?
The best way to help pedestrians feel comfortable crossing Maxwell along an entire corridor, I mean, that's, I think, where we start wanting to think about corridor-wide traffic calming is the typical tool that is used and the city has a process in place for if the residents and neighborhoods so choose to apply for that program.
Can I follow up?
Go ahead.
I guess one thing that concerns me from the engineering study is that it says, studies show that stop signs are not an effective tool for reducing speeds and they generally only reduce speeds at that location. And also, studies show that drivers tend to increase their speeds between stop signs. So I worry, I mean, does that concern you at all of adding a stop sign at Sheridan and Maxwell for the intersections around it?
I think this specific singular intersection doesn't cause me grave concern. It's more the concern of precedent or what the criteria being used are, because there still is a pretty good spacing between other stop-controlled intersections on the corridor.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Flaherty?
Thank you. I had a question, maybe for Mr. Seabor, maybe for Mr. Robinson, about alternatives in the context of meeting the goals of the folks bringing the ordinance and, well, the goals of all of us, which is to, you know, increase safety, in particular with safe crossing of the street is kind of what we're hearing from Ms. Hatton. And I'm picturing something we've done a little bit here in Bloomington and something I've seen, I was just in Baltimore and DC area last week, I saw a lot of this in DC, use of flexible delineator posts and other low-cost options to substantially decrease turn radii and also substantially decrease crossing distances. In fact, in Mount Pleasant in DC, they were, in the areas kind of carved out by the delineator posts, painting murals like in the area there too, which is a nice sort of like, I don't know, component to the intervention. It seems low cost, you know, probably lower cost than speed humps. I would consider that probably to be both addressing safety in terms of safe crossing but also calming traffic by narrowing, having, you know, vertical devices, that sort of thing. So again, I guess I'm asking, what would be the process to like, consider an option like that? Is that part of the traffic, neighborhood traffic calming process or discussion? Are there other processes by which staff would consider interventions like that for measured or perceived safety concerns around crossing?
No, that's a good question. I'll take a first stab and then I might call a friend for Mr. Robertson to weigh in as well. That specific example of doing something like with delineator posts and paint to try to shorten the crossing distance for, like, a pedestrian or to allow vehicles to feel more comfortable pulling further out or to create a tighter feel to encourage slower through speeds, that's something we've discussed. I think it's something I have seen used in other locations and in some locations here in Bloomington. In most of those locations that it's done, it's a part of a program and it's more of a short-term fix where there is a long-term plan and project to, it's, they're not long-term solutions. And so it starts to get to the question of prioritization of larger capital investments and prioritization. So while I think this is an intersection where those type of improvements would be great, they would be beneficial, that's what I think from an ideal perspective we would want here. The trick is, we have so many other locations in the city that also have challenging locations for pedestrians to cross or lack of pedestrian facilities at all and on some more major roads in other neighborhoods or places across the town. And so it gets to, we could consider and start developing more of a program, but without the plan for how we will follow up with it a year or two later, that's, I think, where we got hung up in some of those early coordination discussions. And I don't know, Mr. Robinson, if you want to weigh in at all?
Yeah, I really don't have much to add, but thank you, Councilmember Flaherty, for the question. I would say the kind of tactical urbanism kind of things that you're talking about, I would agree with Andrew, is that typically those are short-term sort of measures where they're pilot programs where we're trying to explore ways to look at longer-term solutions. Certainly, we've discussed it, I know internally, in some of the locations that we have around the city where we use those, maintenance of those items is a concern from public works for them getting damaged, being reinstalled. So there's a little bit of an effort there from the street department and concerns for the ongoing maintenance of those things. And I will say honestly, the many neighborhoods we work with, aesthetics is pretty important and we get a lot of concerns from people not liking the look and feel of delineators, extra signage, those sorts of things. So it's a challenge in working with neighborhoods and trying to arrive at the best solution to deal with those challenges of addressing concerns from the neighborhood from safety, pedestrian crossings and what have you, but it is an effective approach that has been used at other places. But again, I would say it's mostly been used as a temporary step moving towards a longer-term process or implementation of something more permanent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions? Councilmember Volin?
I was going to say at the outset, I have a lot of questions, but I'm going to start with Mr. Seabor. One thing I noted when I visited the intersection was that there are zebra stripes crossing Sheridan on the north side of Mitchell that are all but faded out, like you can barely see them. What is the cost to restore those zebra stripes, roughly?
Honestly, I don't have that $1 figure in mind. I think a part of it is the cost of the material. There's paint that will not last as long and then there's thermoplastic, which can be significantly more expensive but has a much longer lifespan. So a part of it is the cost of the material, but probably one of the bigger challenges, and this falls more to the public works, street department perspective or division, is it's also a capacity issue of how many devices we have and how much resources we have from a staffing to maintain what we have throughout the city.
Well, sure, I mean, I get that and I wasn't looking for an exact cost, I'm looking for digits. You'd like, you hear me like to say, is it $1 million or $10 million, like roughly? Is it $10,000? Is it $1,000? Do we have any sense of it whatsoever?
If it can be, I mean, it's in, let's say, less than a $1,000 range for thermoplastic get a nice intersection.
Okay, all right. Now, I understand that stop signs themselves aren't particularly expensive, but Mr. Rallo began to talk about, and you actually talked about, the additional controls that it would take to properly sign this intersection, that it's not simply about stop signs, especially in the short-term changing traffic patterns. How much more, this is a really elementary question, just how much would it cost to properly sign the intersection in the short-term if a stop sign is the way the council decides to go? And how much in the long-term, roughly?
I mean, the ballpark estimate I provided council staff that I think is in your packet was $1,000 to put in an always-stop with an additional sign on each approach of Maxwell that's hoping that we have a spare electronic message board sign that won't be needed for some special event or something like that for several weeks.
Okay, I've got a follow-up to this, but I'm happy to defer to others. Okay, thank you. Mr. Seabor, you and I have talked this year about a similar concern at a not dissimilar intersection, although one I think might be dissimilar in that it's much busier, the corner of Third and Mitchell. So I was contacted by a neighbor in the area, very concerned about the new traffic pattern, the delineators that were put up, to essentially narrow Third Street from two lanes to one just west of Mitchell until Swain. Can you please tell us more about this project and why you implemented it?
Yeah, I would love to, honestly. So the intersection of Third and Swain, so not Mitchell but one block to the...
West.
What, west of that, there was a regular crash pattern at that intersection that became predictable. And we first really heard about this years ago, probably from IU Police Department that noted it. So where it was at least once a month clockwork, there is a crash at that intersection and it was because people were turning onto Swain, they're turning left on Third to go south on Swain from the right-hand lane, thinking it's a two-way road. And they would get sideswiped or cut off the person behind them. It was, that was that exact crash once a month. And we had tried many less invasive options by enhancing signage, doing new things with signs, putting different colored signs, doing all sorts of things that all proved to be ineffective at changing that traffic pattern. And so we ultimately went with the more obvious impactful change that is in place today. And since that has been in place, that regular traffic crash pattern has gone away.
And what was the cost to implement that system and why did you wait so long to implement it?
I think, truthfully, we tried to take an iterative approach, you know, try to do, if we can just do this little thing, will that be enough? Can we do a little more, will that address it? And so we tried those smaller steps and they just were not effective, and so that's why it took some time. The cost of that, I'm totally spitballing here, but I'm going to say $5,000 to $10,000. Delineur posts can be more expensive and there's quite a few of them out there.
Okay, thank you so far. I've got more questions, but I can defer to others.
Okay. Are there additional questions? Yes, Councilmember Flaherty. So we're on round two.
Sure, thank you. Mr. Seabor, I wanted to ask a little bit about some of the concerns noted in the engineering report about a four-way stop being an unwarranted stop sign here. And we've talked kind of at length in multiple contexts about this sort of thing over the last few years, in the context of Allen Street Greenway, in the context of B-line street crossings. And there's kind of a couple of phenomena that are mentioned. One is learned noncompliance when a stop sign isn't warranted per, like, the guidance of the MUTCD, which is based on, you know, lots of aggregate data. So, you know, potentially this false sense of security of folks because there is a stop sign there, but a minority of people learning not to comply with that because they don't perceive there to be a real reason for it. And then second is this other phenomenon that I think Councilmember Rosenberg might have been bringing up when I was out of the room briefly, which is the tendency to speed up immediately after stop signs that are perceived by drivers to be unnecessary. And so, yeah, we've talked about these in other contexts and why I've been interested in, for instance, stop signs or reversing the stop signs at Washington and Lincoln along the Allen Street Greenway to prioritize that direction of flow for, you know, for the Greenway and ultimately dropped that because you all didn't recommend it for these reasons. So I wondered if you could speak a little bit more to that phenomenon, those two safety concerns that could potentially be induced by an unwarranted stop sign and how that plays out here and, you know, just more to those phenomena generally.
Yeah, no, that's fair and I don't know if I'm going to be able to directly answer it if I'm being 100% honest. And the word "safety" keeps coming up again and that's just the word that makes me so nervous to talk and use. But, you know, we have a lot of stop-controlled, stop signs in the city, some that are always stops, some that aren't. Just, we get requests for always stops at a number of locations and we evaluate them. Sometimes people come to us with a general concern and they don't know what this, we work together to identify what options might be. But we also get a lot of concerns where there are always stops or where there are stop signs and people are not obeying those traffic control devices. So I think at the traffic commission meeting, I had read a recent email I got from another resident in another area where it was an always-stop and they felt the always-stop was, I could grab it, I think I actually have it, but felt like that was, they felt danger, they felt like their life is in danger every time they use that because some cars stop and some cars don't. So it's, again, I know I'm not answering your question directly, but wanting, we just needing to be mindful of when we put something in for drivers, there's psychology to it that, you know, if something feels like it should be there, they're more likely to have a mindset and ultimately develop a culture of obeying those traffic control devices. And so not wanting to overuse them and to maintain some respect so that when there is a stop sign, people know it's really important and they're going to follow it. Did I totally sidestep your question? I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I guess maybe the second kind of thing I mentioned was this, and I might have missed some discussion about, and I apologize if that was the case, of folks speeding up after or speeding towards and quickly decelerating towards a stop sign that, again, that are, they perceive rightly or wrongly as unnecessary.
Yeah, I personally haven't measured that in other instances where things have changed and done a before-after, but there is, that is, it's an industry standard that if I go to a traffic engineering conference that I am going to hear from other city engineers or city traffic engineers that experience that. A stop sign will lower the speeds in the immediate vicinity of that, but overall, you know, drivers are, we're selfish people by culture and so they're just, I need to get from point A to point B and I'm, sometimes it's with the kid in the backseat on their way to school and they're speeding, so that is a phenomenon. I don't have specific data that I've measured personally, though.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Rallo?
Well, just to follow up, speaking just a little bit about this intersection, I mean, the traffic report indicates, your report within it indicates that you have eastbound traffic on Maxwell at 687 vehicles per day approaching that intersection, westbound 1,400, 1,399, approximately 1,400 per day, and then southbound on Sheridan is 833. So I would assume that if you're approaching a stop sign there, you're probably going to encounter vehicles. And so to ignore it and blow through it would be very foolish. I mean, it would be, I mean, we're not talking about an unbalanced intersection. Yes, there aren't very many cars coming from the south, but there's significance numbers coming from the north. Am I interpreting that correctly?
I think that's fair and I don't have the numbers directly in front of me, but that is a fair amount of traffic, but it's not a lot of traffic. Like, maybe it's a car a minute or, like, on average, like, on big picture, and a car a minute isn't a lot, but I think that's one of the interesting things that we tried to highlight in the traffic report is that it is unusual where the, even the functional classification system of our roads does change there and there is a lot of turning behavior and so a lot of vehicles, not all naturally already coming to a stop or slowing down. So that is, that is something to highlight about.
So I guess what I'm establishing is just the sheer volume of traffic, okay, indicates to me that people are not going to be careless about going through a stop sign. I know, but, you know, there's old manner of drivers out there and, of course, they may do it, but I would think if it were a very unbalanced intersection, you might assume, I'm not going to have to worry about cars here coming, crossing, right? So, but anyway, that's more of a quament, thank you.
Are we into quaments? No, because I could have given quite a few of them.
I apologize.
Mr. Seabor, one of the things I talked about with Ms. Hatton when visiting the intersection was different possibilities for improving the intersection. There's a lot of different opinions, obviously, a lot of different opinions about how the intersection could be... intersection could be better improved. We, I think we all agree it could use improvement. And the recommendation here is for one of the apparently least expensive and least invasive changes. But what would it take to properly make this intersection, I mean, it's hard for me to say safest because, as you say, it's already not unsafe in that there's no record of crashes from that technical perspective. Now, that doesn't mean that it doesn't make the neighbors feel safe. They don't feel safe around it. But I mean, to make the neighbors feel safe about this intersection, which I believe they deserve to feel safe about it, what can you imagine it might take to do it right? I mean, I'm asking you to redesign an intersection here, and I know that's a hard thing, but I mean, you start somewhere.
There's a few things, and it kind of gets maybe to Councilmember Rosenbarger's question a little bit too. Like, we could focus on making this intersection safe, but there are a number of intersections along the corridor that have similar, but they're all, they're different. You know, if I had, we had as a city unlimited resources and there wouldn't be property impacts, I mean, we would, the hill is the big issue here. I mean, it does limit sight distance. Ideally, we would not have a hill, but that's not realistic, right? So, so that's one thing. I mean, just how big do you want me to think here? But I think, you know, ideally, we would have more sidewalks in the city. Ideally, this intersection would be tightened up. We would have bulbouts where it's possible. We would tighten up the corner radius, one of the, it's a huge turning radius. There's buses and vehicles that are large that need to maneuver it, but that's bigger. So, so those are the types of changes that I would want to look at here, and I think would be justified. It just, then the trick is with our resources, you know, how do you prioritize that versus other needs in the community as well?
Right. So, I mean, one of those, one of the interventions that we could implement would be, I mean, the ideal to me would be to narrow the road. Can you talk a little bit about what it would take to not just narrow the intersection, but the road that causes the high speeds in the first place?
Yeah, I mean, just knowing, so there's sidewalk on the north side of the road. There's no sidewalk on the south side of the road. Ideally, we'd have sidewalk everywhere, right? We would have, the south side of the road doesn't have curbs. There's limited stormwater infrastructure. So as soon as we start narrowing up a road and putting in curbs and putting in sidewalks, ideally, we can fit in street trees and there's no utilities under the ground that keeps that. That helps also create a narrowing effect. But the cost and magnitude of what I just described would be, would be huge.
I've got, thank you for those answers. I've got more questions, but I can wait for the next.
I'm seeing no further questions, so go ahead.
Okay, this is for Mr. Robinson, if he can come back on. Mr. Robinson, I recall that the current implementation of the neighborhood traffic safety program is based on the dysfunctional program that preceded it. Can you tell us a little bit about what it used to be like for a neighborhood to apply for traffic calming and how the current program is an improvement?
Or, Councilmember Rollin, but thank you for bringing that up.
What? Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, the prior traffic, neighborhood traffic safety program was largely ineffective from a kind of grassroots citizen input process. There were many steps in the process. I can't remember how many steps there were. There was voting, going to different boards and commissions, and ultimately coming before city council. We went through a pretty extensive process to kind of revamp that with the new program that I believe council supported 9-0 with the new program that we were talking about that kind of deals with both the resident-led process and a staff-led process based on the city's transportation plan. So it streamlined it, number one. Number two, it laid out clear expectations, what you can do with the program where before it didn't. Number three, we do have dedicated funding. While it's not significant, it does actually allocate funding to fund a few installations a year. So that's kind of overall the big picture of the differences of what it used to be and what it is now. It's not perfect, but it's certainly an improvement of trying to work with neighborhoods and addressing some of the concerns. I do want to circle back a little bit to the question that you answered to Andrew on the cost of the prior improvements. I do remember that actually council sidewalk committee considered a sidewalk on this location, and I do believe it built the sidewalk on the north side of the road to the east, and there was discussion about narrowing, narrowing the road, striping on street parking on the south side of the street, and the extensive cost for stormwater. So those, those were things that were discussed in the past with the prior project about how to narrow that roadway, and it kind of goes back to what Andrew was talking about. All those decisions do cost a lot, and you start talking about underground infrastructure utilities, impacts to people's property. I believe we had to acquire property from adjacent property owners to install that. So those, those type of improvements do take a lot of consideration and time to install as well as resources.
So you raised a question that I was going to ask later, but why was striping the street for parking not implemented? That sounds like a pretty low-cost thing. That's something that I talked about with Ms. Hatton.
I actually believe it did at one point, was tried, but there was nobody that ever parked there. I just, I'm going off my memory, Councilmember Rollin, so that was quite some time ago. But it was something that was discussed on the south side of the street. It also just goes back to the maintenance of paint on the road. You know, there was a picture of, I believe, South Down Lane where we had a similar example in the presentation where there's striped spaces on the road to help narrowing that section of road. It only works if there's vehicles that park there, and most of the time, there's not a lot of vehicles that park there. We do have residents there that don't love that treatment, that they would want other improvements, and we've had debates and discussions about that sort of thing. So I think, again, it's just a challenge to figure out what the temporary measure helps lead us to a more permanent solution.
Right, well, so to finish with my original question, then, the neighborhood perceives that the only tool available through the neighborhood traffic calming program is, what was the term, vertical, speed humps. Is that true? Are there no other tools that neighborhoods have? I mean, I know that before we rehad the program, there was a big argument on West Third Street about chicanes, which didn't seem to, didn't seem like a successful diversion of traffic to the neighbors who live with it now.
Honestly, I can't speak to the specifics of what is and is not available in the program. I think generally, it's based on improvements that we could easily install that don't typically trigger conflicts with utilities, right-of-way acquisition, stormwater. So when you start talking about some of those other chicanes, you know, curb extensions, those sort of things, that takes a little bit more engineering and technical evaluation on that.
And I see Mr. Seabor wants to respond, yeah.
Yeah, I was just going to add to what Director Robinson was saying, that I don't think there's anything that's specifically in the traffic calming policy that precludes other traffic control, traffic calming devices being explored. Typically, and it's a relatively new program, it's just been speed humps. Other things could potentially be pursued, they haven't been. The trick then is, I'm now using the word prioritization a lot, that if, if the resources were used at this intersection, like bumpouts, that would, truthfully, from a corridor-wide perspective, have a smaller traffic calming benefit compared to speed humps that maybe another neighborhood is applying for, and it just probably wouldn't prioritize favorably.
Okay, thank you. I've got more questions I'll ask later.
Yeah, we have a number of members of the public here, and we're approaching 10 o'clock. If you'd be willing to hold those, I'd like to move to the public at this point. Okay, seeing no objections to that. Let us move to public comment. For a quick show of hands, just to help us time this out, how many here in chambers would like to make? And Mr. Lucas, could you extend the invitation on Zoom, please?
Yes, happy to do that. See two hands up already. If there are members of the public on Zoom that would like to offer comments, please use the raise hand feature in your control bar. You can find that by clicking the reactions tab or the more tab. If you're not able to locate the raise hand button, please send a chat to the meeting host. I see four more hands in the time I've been speaking for a total of six on Zoom currently.
Okay. I'd like to suggest two minutes for count, for public comment. Any objections? Seeing none. Let's go ahead with that. Please, if you would, please approach the podium if you're here in chambers. And Mr. Lucas, we're still at four on Zoom, I think you said?
I'm sorry.
Well, how many are on Zoom?
Oh.
Six, okay.
I see seven now.
There you go. Okay, let's begin here in chambers and then we'll come to Zoom in a minute, so, welcome. Please state your name for the record, and then you'll have two minutes.
My name is Tommy Allison, and I wish to thank you for your service. Our democracy depends on citizens able and willing to serve in public office. It's not an easy job. Citizens have a role too. In that role, Stephanie, having carefully studied the hazards of Sheridan and Maxwell intersection, has alerted city officials through the proper channels. Now it's up to you to decide whether the neighborhood gets a stop signs at the intersection. Engineering rules are guidelines, but elected officials must go beyond guidelines and consider the perspective of their constituents. This intersection is a main crossroad for cars headed for First and Eagleson, but also for pedestrians going south. For cars turning at the intersection, the short sight distance there is troubling, but it is positively daunting for pedestrians. For example, I have lived and walked this area for years, but I no longer feel safe in crossing there. I move too slowly. Once an eastbound car crests the hill on Maxwell, I couldn't move fast enough to clear the intersection. I have no quarrel with engineering rules, but a four-way stop at Sheridan and Maxwell will surely be a boon for the drivers wanting to turn there and pedestrians wanting to cross there.
Thank you, Ms. Allison. Could you wrap up your comments, please?
I beg your pardon?
You're at time. Could you please wrap up your comments?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Mr. Lucas, let's go to Zoom.
Yes, first on Zoom is Chuck Livingston.
Okay. Mr. Livingston, welcome. You'll have two minutes. Please confirm your name for the record.
Thank you, I'm Chuck Livingston. Almost every day, I cross Maxwell Lane in this neighborhood. I cross at East Side, I cross sometimes at Mitchell, I cross at Highland, I never cross at Sheridan. It's by far the most dangerous place to cross. I have the option to make that choice, to use other, other crossing points. From the north side of all those streets, Sheridan is the only one with an effective sidewalk. Wheelchair users, people who are visually impaired coming from the north, have no option in other than using Sheridan, and they're confronted with the most dangerous crossing in the neighborhood. I believe that crossing at Sheridan will be much safer once there is a stop sign there. I don't feel that it'll put me at any risk crossing at the other intersections nearby. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Livingston. Let's come here in chambers. Welcome, please state your name for the record.
I'm still Jim Allison, just like before.
And you'll have two minutes.
When I heard the engineer, the city engineer recite the best engineering practices not too long ago for the location of city stop signs, all shoulds, by the way, not shalls, they seemed sensible enough to me, but I might add just one more rule to that list of best practices. And if I did, it would go something like this. When a constituent presents a carefully reasoned and substantiated proposal that falls outside those guidelines, take it very seriously indeed. And that is what Stephanie Hatton has done, and I urge you to do as she proposes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allison. Mr. Lucas, who do we have on Zoom?
Next on Zoom is Lisa Thomason.
Ms. Thompson, welcome. Please confirm your name for the record, and then you'll have two minutes.
Hi, thank you. I'm Lisa Thomason. These were great presentations. I really appreciated hearing from Planning and Transportation, Engineering, Traffic Commission, and the very, very impressive presentation by the neighborhood bringing forth all these issues. When I first heard about this, as somebody who's lived near a stop signs that people don't want to stop at because they come down big hills, it's absolutely terrifying because people run them and they run them pretty blithely. I am impressed that the neighbors who live here are willing to sign on for the incredible amount of noise from our cars that don't have required inspection, that are going to be stopping and starting, and the toxic dust from brakes and exhaust as engines are revving, all things that come with a busy four-way intersection. I think it is a challenging intersection. The thing that concerns me most is that hill for people who are bicycling up it on either direction or coming down it, and cars that are going to want to accelerate. I think that's really, it's a difficult thing. It's a very wide intersection, and it's a heavily, not a super heavily used corridor, but there is traffic particularly at certain times of the day. And I just want folks to be aware of some of the concerns that were raised in this meeting about what happens when people hit those stop signs and don't want to stop, and also some of the unpleasantness that comes with living in a four-way stop, and some of the scariness that's associated with it sometimes. I've been hit, almost hit many, many times, and there have been accidents. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Mr. Lucas, let's go to the next person on Zoom. If anyone in chambers would like to speak, please approach the podium.
Next on Zoom is the attendee with the screen name Virginia's New iPad.
Ms. Virginia's New iPad, welcome. Please confirm your name for the record, and then you'll have two minutes.
Virginia Metzger, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Please go ahead.
Oh, okay. I live at 837 South Sheridan Drive. My house is just three houses north of the intersection. I have lived there since 1987, and I have crossed that intersection in numerous times with my Westies, that are little white dogs with little short legs, and I cannot count the number of times we have had to run like hell through that intersection in order to not get hit. Sheridan goes directly to Bryant Park, which my dogs love to go to, and I think I would rather dodge a car that might go through a rolling stop sign than dodge a car screaming over the crest of that hill, which we have done many times. So I fully support this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. And here in chambers, welcome. Please state your name for the record, and then you'll have two minutes.
Hi, I'm Wendy Bernstein. I live at the southwest corner of Maxwell and Eagleson, where I've been for 30 years. And I have seen driving get worse in this town in recent times. People really do ignore stop signs. They barrel through them, and I have experience of an accident that did involve snowy weather on Maxwell, but had there been a stop sign at Sheridan and Maxwell, the person who came barreling down that hill wouldn't have crashed into the culvert below Eagleson going down the hill. So there's all, that is an actual accident that I've witnessed. I also have walked a lot in the neighborhood. I also have walked a lot in the neighborhood and very often in the evening. And I have had cars coming east on Maxwell, coming up the hill, watch me trying to figure out if I should try to cross the street going south. I've had them actually stop where there's no stop sign to give me the confidence that I could cross the street. So in my opinion, this incredibly well-thought-out plan that Stephanie's offered us and the incredible patience that you all have given to this meeting are all very valuable and I hope will lead to putting the four-way stop at the intersection of Sheridan and Maxwell. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Bernstein. Let's go to Zoom. Mr. Lucas, who do we have next?
Next is Hunter Rackley.
Hunter, I didn't hear the last name.
Hunter Rackley.
Mr. Rackley, welcome. Please, please confirm your name for the record and then you'll have two minutes.
Yes, it's Hunter Rackley, R-A-C-K-L-E-Y.
Great, thank you. You'll have two minutes. Welcome.
Thank you. And I apologize, I just started losing my voice today. So I hope it will hold out while I speak and that you can understand me. So I live at the intersection of Maxwell and Mitchell, just a couple houses down from Sheridan. I have lived here for three years now and I have three children, ages 11 down to six. I work as a data analyst in the audit profession. And I mention that because I will actually reference why that has some relevance at a couple points. The first thing I wanted to touch on was something that Stephanie opened it with, which was talking about the process that she has had to go through and endure, and I know has been painful, and that we've talked about several times. In the audit profession, that is, one of the huge things we do is review processes for them being appropriate and well-designed. And this process has seemed to be very poor. This, the resident-initiated processes seem difficult. They seem to lack appropriate collaboration between community members and city departments. I know there is some, but I think there's a lot missing. And it seems to have prevented consideration of a more holistic approach. Because here we are tonight, spending lots of time talking about what are other potential solutions, when all of this could have been discussed and addressed and brought as a whole package, rather than pick one route, do all the research, all the work, and then now that we're here, we discuss are there other options that might be better without having full research? And my wife also was someone that tried about two and a half years ago, the resident-initiated process, and was told, we're sorry, that just closed. You have to wait, it was eight, nine, 10 months now before you can actually consider that again. So that was one point. The other thing I want to talk about is related to my job as a data analyst, which, so I evaluate lots of data on a regular basis.
Mr. Rackley, I just want to point out that you're at time, so could you please wrap up your comments?
Yes, I will, thank you. But even though I'm a data analyst and I look at things like the engineering department has talked about, metrics, here, there's a lived experience. And metrics can't always override lived experience. There is lots of excessive speeding, as many have talked about. I worked from home during COVID within my office, looking right over this, the intersection in this road and saw it very frequently.
Thank you, Mr. Rackley. We appreciate your comments, so. So, and coming here in chambers?
Hi, my name is Teresa Swift. I live at 839 South Sheridan, which is pretty much at the corner in question. I used to live where Stephanie lives. So I lived there two years and I've lived at my current location three years, so five, six years total. The moment I moved into the neighborhood, I determined pretty quickly that that was a very dangerous intersection. One of our neighbors used to be on the city council and I asked him what it would take to get a stop sign on that corner, which seemed like a very simple solution. He said, you can forget about that, the city will never do it. I do hope you will prove him wrong. It's just, you have to use your ears to listen for cars. If you're hearing impaired, how are you ever going to hear them? You can't see them. If you don't move, if you're not, don't have a normal gate speed, you're not going to make it across that intersection. My husband is severely disabled. I just want to point out about the speed bump question. He and several other elderly neighbors have commented that speed bumps are very painful if you have back issues. And that is why the neighbors don't want speed bumps. We want that stop sign. And I hope we can have it. It seems like a no-brainer. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Swift. Mr. Lucas, who do we have next on Zoom?
Next is Natalia Galvin.
Ms. Galvin, welcome. Please confirm your name for the record, you'll have two minutes.
Okay, thanks. My name is Natalia Galvin. I met Stephanie Hatton last February during her advocacy on the stop sign effort in constituent meeting, and I'm here to fully support her tonight. Beyond her very impressive presentation, Ms. Hatton's and her fellow neighbors' appeal for a stop sign feels like a reasonable compromise to provide a stop sign or to provide a stop to traffic right now. I have walked this intersection many times and have heard many thoughtful ideas related to this particular intersection. I do agree that maybe the street is too wide and a more in-depth analysis needs to be done. But why can't both solutions be possible? What is the harm or penalty of listening to neighbors' concerns, installing a stop sign now with the expectation that within the next couple of years, a deeper dive and a more complex solution can be reached? Isn't that what government should be? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Galvin. And let's come here in chambers. If you would, please state your name for the record, you'll have two minutes.
Hi. My name is Jeff Bingham and I live on the corner of Eagleson and Maxwell, across the street from Wendy over there. And I've lived there for 33 years. Eagleson, used to be Jordan, is the major north-south thoroughfare to and through campus. And the intersections at Maxwell and Eagleson and South Downs are the major feeders from the south for that thoroughfare. During the years I've been there, there have been changes at IU, two big changes that are relevant. One is that the students have moved off campus into the city. And the other is the university has been persistently reducing the amount of parking on campus. And part of it is for the students, they've moved it into satellite parking lots, one of which is at Bryant Park. The result of these two changes is that, especially in the morning, people working at IU and the students are all racing tensely, panickedly to their parking places to beat the competition. The other factor is Elm Heights is close to the campus. Everybody walks to go to school, to go to work. I've been doing it for 30 years. They pass me the cars at high speed, very close. I'm lucky to still be here.
Mr. Bingham, you're at time, if you could finish up your comments quickly.
All right, so the final point is, yes, I've heard cars stop at first and accelerate traveling south up to the stop at Maxwell. There's a stop sign, so they stop before they turn on the Maxwell. The cars coming up Maxwell, say from the Bryant Street parking lot, have no stop sign. And they fly around that corner where every morning, in the dark, thanks to daylight savings time, children are waiting for the bus.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Lucas, who do we have next on Zoom?
Next on Zoom is William Coulter.
Mr. Coulter, welcome. Please confirm your name for the record and then you'll have two minutes.
Yeah, my name is William Coulter. I live on Park Avenue between First and University. I avoid the intersection at Sheridan and Maxwell as it's currently configured, for reasons that other people have already covered very well. If we're serious about encouraging walking, we really need to do something about this intersection. A stop sign is perhaps not the optimal solution, but given that there's limited resources and this is a pretty low-cost solution, I fully support the idea of a stop sign at this intersection. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Coulter. Let's come here in chambers. Welcome, please state your name for the record and then you'll have two minutes.
Thank you. My name is Carrie Thompson and I live on the northeast corner of Maxwell and Sheridan. We, I live with my family. We have five children on this off-ramp, which I would also classify more as a runway. I would say we don't need to quibble about the word "safe." And I don't know what it takes to report an accident, but I have called an ambulance twice to this intersection when non-motorized vehicles have been either hit by cars or otherwise in an accident. I did not call the police, but there were ambulances called. Twice just in the past week, I mean, I cycle to work every day, and twice in the past week, as I have come down Sheridan to turn left onto Maxwell, a car has come, even though I have signaled that I'm turning left, come around me as I'm turning left. It's incredibly dangerous. They're doing that, I assume, because it's incredibly difficult to see what's coming over the hill, and they're nervous. In terms of traffic controlling and traffic calming pathways such as parking, I will note that I applied to the city four times for our residential parking permits before the fifth time they were finally granted. We need easier ways to park on the street if we're going to use this. I'm advocating for a stop sign because reconstruction would require a considerable amount of time and budget allocation. And quoting my neighbor Stephanie, "Progress happens through empowerment, not discouragement." There is an easy answer. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Let's go to Zoom, Mr. Lucas.
Next on Zoom is Renee Miller.
Thank you. Welcome, Ms. Miller. Please confirm your name for the record, you'll have two minutes.
Renee Miller. I think a stop sign there would be very helpful and also flexible delineators. I looked up those while we were speaking. And the very nice ones are not that expensive. Can be found for between $30 and $50 apiece. The only issue I have with those is they're unsightly. But they are not that expensive and a stop sign also would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Let's come here in chambers. Please state your name for the record and then you'll have two minutes. Welcome.
Yes, good evening, good evening, council members. I just want to say I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you this evening and thank you to all of you. My name is Eric Oost and I'm offering my comments this evening as a resident and as the president of the Elm Heights Neighborhood Association Board in support of the adoption of ordinance 2231. Our neighborhood is requesting an always-stop in order to stop traffic at the intersection of Maxwell Lane and Sheridan Drive to effectively support the coordinated safe passage through and shared use of this intersection by pedestrians, bicyclists, and drivers. Empirical studies and standard practice provide evidence that stop signs are a customary way to stop traffic at an intersection. An always-stop is resonant with unique characteristics of this intersection and will effectively help mitigate the hazards arising from the oblique alignment of the roadway and the difficulties presented by changes in elevation upon approach to this intersection. An always-stop is an acknowledged, cost-conscious, and functional traffic control device that is compatible with the design of the Maxwell Lane roadway and surrounding residential streets. Ms. Hatton's marvelous presentation provides clear and convincing evidence in support of the adoption of ordinance 2231. I respectfully request that you approve ordinance 2231. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oost. Let's go to Zoom next. Who do we have, Mr. Lucas?
I see no more speakers on Zoom.
Okay, is there anyone here in chambers? Yes, welcome. Please state your name for the record and then you'll have two minutes.
My name is Martha Harsany. I'm a resident of Elm Heights neighborhood. I want to speak in favor of this always-stop at Maxwell and Sheridan. Several decades ago, after numerous accidents, the two-way intersection of Second Street and what was then Jordan, is now Eagleson, turned into an always-stop. I travel through that intersection frequently and I have never seen anyone disregard that stop sign. Stop signs can and do stop traffic. And we need one at the intersection of Maxwell and Sheridan. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Harsany. Mr. Lucas, anyone pop up on Zoom?
Yes, next on Zoom is Betty Rose Nagel.
Ms. Nagel, welcome. Please confirm your name for the record and then you'll have two minutes.
Hello, I'm Betty Rose Nagel and I'm calling, or I'm zooming in to support the proposal for a four-way stop. The resident who led this proposal put in incredible amount of time and effort and met with a great deal of resistance. All of the other speakers have indicated reasons why a four-way stop would be a good idea there, a very good idea. At the same time, as, as Ms. Hatton has been going through the hoops, the city has been developing the greenways. One at Hawthorne and Weatherstone now is on the verge of being approved. And it is highly over-engineered. It is not necessary. There is, it is a very good street, Hawthorne is, for Greenway because it is in fact low-traffic. And yet, the input from neighbors doesn't seem to matter very much and is avoided if at all possible. At least that's the way it seems to me. So it's ironic. The, the city wants to jab down a proposal that would cost a lot more money and be a lot more disruptive. And yet, what seems to so many of us as a personal, person perfectly reasonable request for a four-way stop was met with as close to a no as possible without being a no. So I do urge you, please, pass this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nagel. Let's come here in chambers. Welcome, please state your name for the record and you'll have two minutes.
Thanks, my name is Greg Alexander. What a great discussion. Thank you. I'm so excited to see you all looking at intersections. I've got some intersections for you. Madison and 17th, College and Dodds, Walnut and Kirkwood, Rogers and Hayes. That's 2021, that's fatal crashes on city-managed streets in 2021. Last year, we had a fatal crash at the intersection of Rogers and Hayes and another at Walnut and Kirkwood, a death at College and Dodds, and another at Madison and 17th. That's three blocks from my house. That's what we're talking about, right? We're talking about safety. That's what safety means. Safety is what those people didn't have when their body was mangled by glass and steel. Those four people didn't receive proactive safety when they were using public infrastructure at those four intersections. Another thing those locations have in common, none of them are in Elm Heights. Even though in 2020, there were two deaths at the northwest corner of Elm Heights. We desperately, desperately need proactive safety. Heck, we need reactive safety. Some of these intersections are repeat offenders. We need them to feel like they have, or, we need our engineers to take this pattern of death seriously. We need them to feel like they have a public mandate to take bold and effective actions. The thing is, our engineers are trying to do something really difficult. They need the benefit of this council's guidance. They have an enormous responsibility to react to the bloodshed in our street. They need a lot more support from you than they're getting. And instead, you're letting one neighborhood micromanage them. They're trying to do important work and now they're wasting this time with this remedial lesson in politics. lesson in politics. Thanks to this council's work, now they know, valuable insight, Elm Heights is more important than the rest of the city. Is that knowledge really going to help them stop the carnage? Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone on Zoom?
Not that I see, no.
Okay. Welcome here in chambers. If you would, please share your name for the record, and then you'll have two minutes.
Hello, my name is Babak Sarajey. I would like to first thank you for your service. I would like to thank our neighbors and members of the public, and especially our neighbor Stephanie Hattan, whose presentation just blew my mind. We've heard from many people that, in our neighborhood, I live in that neighborhood, that they try to avoid this intersection at Sheridan-Maxwell. I don't have that option because I live at that intersection. I use that intersection as a pedestrian, as a car driver, and as a biker. I walk with my kids, we have five of them, around the neighborhood using that intersection, walk to schools, and so on. I just want to make a quick number of points. One is that I thank Councilman Rallo for sharing those statistics of the number of cars that use, the traffic that goes through. Not all of those cars go at all times during the day, so if we have 1,400 cars going through Maxwell, that doesn't mean that's one car per minute. There is high times of traffic in the morning, especially now. That means that they are using that intersection when it's dark. So the vision, which is already obstructed, is even worse during those times. Due to COVID and other things in the past, I have worked at home, and that has allowed me to observe many instances, including car crashes. I have run out of the house a few times barefoot to go and attend to the people in those crashes. There have been hunks and screeches when people are in near crashes, and so on. I thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Additional comments here in chambers? Welcome, if you would, please state your name for the record, and then you'll have two minutes.
Thank you. My name is Jeff Richardson. I live at 1126 East First Street. I just wanted to say, I thought this discussion tonight was very substantive. All the questions that were asked, comments made by the city officials, by people online, and all of you. And so I think this could be an opportunity for a broader discussion about safety for pedestrians, vehicles, bike riders in the city, so I look forward to that. I think a lot of good comments were already made, and so I just want to say thank you to Stephanie Hattan for her amazing work, and for other people who've worked on this carefully over the last 10 months, and I stand in favor of this ordinance being passed. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson.
Vice President Stanley, could I ask for, to remind the public to please sign in if they haven't already?
Thank you. Good reminder, so. But, Mr. Lucas, do we have anybody else on Zoom?
Not that I see, no.
Okay. And anyone else here in chambers? I'm not seeing any? Okay. In which case, let's come back to council. And again, if you haven't signed in, please make it a point to do that. So let's come back to council for additional questions at this time. Councilmember Rosenbarger?
I have a repeat question for Mr. Seabor. I think maybe Mr. Robinson, too. Just speaking, a lot of public commenters about the time and the resources for a stop sign compared to other options here. Could you speak to that a little bit? I mean, I think the engineering report is saying a stop sign is not the best approach here. And I just want to know, like, does that report take into account resources and other options, and what might happen instead?
Sorry. Can you repeat that? I'm so sorry.
Yes, I am wanting to know if, okay, so the engineering report is not recommending a stop sign in this location, and I understand a stop sign is, I assume, pretty cheap compared to other options. So I guess my question is, is that still, you know, your recommendation, or is it to look at other options for this space, for the street?
I think in my ideal world, we would be looking at other options for the street, but I also want to truly recognize that a lot of those other options have costs that can be significant, and that I don't know if I would be comfortable suggesting that those costs at this location would be more, the best use of those funds, considering every other place in the city. So I think that that question is maybe one reason why, you know, we're trying to take it somewhat of a neutral approach. Like, it is not, I wouldn't recommend putting in an always-stop there, but there are potential reasons to consider doing so, because that is a more affordable option to address some of the concerns we're hearing.
Does that conclude your question? Okay. Additional questions? Councilmember Volin.
Mr. Seabor, one of the public commenters talked about how they called an ambulance but not the police. Does engineering only get data from police reports, or are there other public safety reports that play a role in determining the safety of an intersection?
Yeah, we look at what are likely police-generated crash reports, so we're not calling up the hospitals or fire department to identify if there's incident reports. We rely on crash reports that would come from the police.
Well, that certainly underscores how important it is for people to report to the police a crash in the intersection. I have another question. Quite a while ago, this council approved a change to signage all over downtown, namely to eliminate the ability to turn right on red. To this, I don't know how long it's been since, it's been, I want to say, a year, maybe more than a year. Why have the signs not been installed?
I guess I'm happy to say that those signs are being installed. I think they started being installed this week, but I do recognize that it took some time. I can't remember what the cost estimate associated with that ordinance was, but it was significantly higher than this, I imagine it was, and then probably actually become, in real terms, significantly more than was originally estimated.
Should a stop sign be approved tonight, does the neighborhood have a reason to expect that it will take a very short or a very long time to get those stop signs installed? And so why would it take longer, why would it take a year and a half to get the right turn on red signs downtown, which are full of traffic accidents all the time, at this intersection where there were no recorded police reports there? How long should they expect to wait for that stop sign to be installed?
Sure. So I think there's a couple of questions in there. I think the no right turn on red ordinance had a number of signs at a number of locations. I can't recall, like, it's maybe 40 or 80 signs in busy intersections downtown. So just to order a magnitude of that work and recognizing that that work requires somebody being in a specialty truck over traffic, that just is a much more complicated exercise to implement. The intersection, if this was approved, you know, the installation effort is done by another department, Public Works, but I truly would hope that, you know, before the end of this year, that we would be working together to have it installed and in place.
But it certainly, this underscores, among other things, the challenge that you face every day as a director of a department who has to work with other departments just to coordinate things, let alone to get things done in a quick, quick way. Can you talk at all about, you know, the limitations you face there? I mean, why can't you give the good people of Sheridan and Maxwell a stop sign next week?
Yeah, I think if we had all the staff that we ever needed and all the signs already in our inventory, and the message board signs that I talked about weren't already planned for being deployed somewhere else, the reality is that it takes time to develop the detailed design plan, work with people to order locates, so that we can make sure there's not utilities underground, that as we put things in the ground, that we're not puncturing a gas main or something like that. So there's response times to that, and so ideally, this might take two weeks of work if we could dedicate all the resources immediately to this. And that's assuming that right now, the staff that is doing that is not assigned to removing leaves or potentially picking up trash, or I don't know, but that's a different department, so.
I do know that Public Works is running understaffed right now. That's true.
That's true.
Okay, here is, I've got more, but I'll defer.
Are there additional round-one questions? Go ahead.
Thank you. So when I visited the intersection, the biggest argument for me, why a stop sign would be good there, is because it would change the traffic pattern to authorize pedestrians and bicyclists to cross. So why isn't that a good enough reason to justify, despite the warrants not meriting crashes there? I mean, at least if there's a stop sign, somebody knows that they're going to have the right of way the minute they get to the intersection after the car that's beat them there has passed.
Sure.
What do you say to that?
That's a great question, and this is, my answer might be where, there might be some kind, but the, for pedestrian safety, focusing on pedestrians, if that is the reason to put one on here, I personally have concerns with that because there are pedestrians that cross every intersection in the city. And so that, on its own, I guess that's my first, that's just.
So in other words, to restate what you're saying is, by that logic, we should put a stop sign at every intersection because that way we give pedestrians the right to cross?
Correct.
And so that's, that alone is not a reason to do so, okay? And finally, I'd like to ask, well, in this round at least, I'd like to ask you to talk for a little bit more broadly about your obligation. I mean, many, many people said, "It seems reasonable to us that there should be a stop sign here," but that's not your job. Your job is to make the whole city safe, and you've got a priority list. So why is it, help, help people who would think that way understand why it is that you can't think that way because you have, I mean, why is it not about making this one intersection safer?
Yeah, that's another really good question, and truly, like, having been at this intersection on multiple times with residents, having been there myself, like, I understand that it feels, it can feel uncomfortable to cross. It can feel challenging as a driver to know, is the car coming over that hill going 80 miles an hour? I'm just making up numbers. But, so there is some, by nature, it feels uncomfortable. I'll use that word instead of unsafe. And so I totally understand and appreciate that, and can, I know where they're coming from. The trick is that, you know, we, technically, there is sight distance, and if we were to design an intersection, or every intersection where there, you can just see as far as you need to see, no matter how fast anybody's driving, we would just never have on-street parking anywhere. We would, the implications are significant. So needing to have something, some criteria that I can say yes, if we say yes here, how can I not say yes to the next location? So trying to be consistent in how we treat anybody in any intersection, and that's, that's the trick, and here there are some situations, some things that I'm wanting to just own. It's the hill, it's the nature of, a lot of people are turning, like the collector network. This is, there are some unique attributes here. It is a very large intersection. So I fully understand that, and it does feel uncomfortable, but to say it is unsafe when there's no crashes, and then there's, there's locations in the city where there are crashes. So I had, just that I struggle with. I hope that helps a little bit.
It helps a lot. Thank you. I'll defer other questions.
Additional questions?
This question is for the sponsors. First question is, is there a fiscal impact statement for this ordinance which would, which has definitely revolved around the cost of implementation?
There isn't a formal, no, but I understand that the cost of implementing this stop sign is in the range of about $1,000. Is that correct?
That's not the question. The question is, why isn't there a statement? I mean, this is something we fought about in council over, retaining fiscal impact statements for precisely an issue like this. And furthermore, $1,000 didn't necessarily take into account the temporary costs of changing the traffic pattern. I mean, what is the full cost of this? Do you have a number?
The cost of the infrastructure is about $1,000. I, I don't know what it, Mr. Seabor is probably, you know, better aware of what it would take in terms of staff time in order to implement it. I can only say that compared with alternatives, if there are alternatives, it wouldn't bring, it would taint the intersection, but we're talking about many hundreds of thousands of dollars there. So that's the differential.
I mean, I'll just note that that is, that answer is, there is no public, no fiscal impact statement, and it was not, it was, you didn't bother to do it. Here's the other question. Why did you and the other sponsors not invite Mr. Seabor, Mr. Robinson, a member of the Traffic Commission, to address these issues at Committee of the Whole?
I didn't invite Mr. Seabor, it's true. I assumed, because this was an ordinance that might, would concern them, that staff would appear. So it was, you know, I think, kind of an oversight, or, you know, and I'll take responsibility for that, but if Mr. Seabor or Mr. Lucas has anything else to add, I think it was just an assumption that perhaps Mr. Seabor didn't feel he was needed, that the report basically spoke for itself. I mean, I don't mean to speak for you, Mr. Seabor, but I think you've said that before.
I mean, you're putting him on the spot by asking that because Mr. Seabor has an obligation to be neutral.
I'm repeating what he said earlier. So that was my understanding, and based on what he said.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Okay. Seeing none, let's move to final comment, then. Who would like to offer? Councilmember Rallo?
Yeah, really briefly, because we have other business. I regard this intersection as hazardous, and I think that you've heard a lot of experiences of people who have actually, you know, had interactions that have been very distressing. In terms of, I appreciate engineering meeting with us repeatedly, discussing options and so forth. Mr. Seabor has expressed that he, he's comfortable stating that he doesn't have significance concerns about implementing a stop sign here. In terms of additional infrastructure, we just spoke to that. That's a very expensive proposition to re-engineer a street, and this is relatively inexpensive. And actually, it speaks to Mr. Alexander's concern, that there are a lot of priorities, and I agree with him. I'm aware of a lot of priorities for bike and ped and car safety. This frees up money for that. This is a very cheap, you know, remedy. I mean, maybe it's not perfect, but I think that it's workable, and Mr. Seabor says it is. So therefore, we don't have to invest a lot here. We can spend it elsewhere. And again, a stop sign brings order to a very chaotic intersection, so I hope you agree and will support ordinance 2231.
Thank you. Additional comment? Oh, Councilmember Flaherty.
Thank you. Thank you again to ordinance sponsors and members of the public here tonight, and staff for weighing in on it. I've met with Ms. Hattan and several other residents who were here this evening on a number of times advocating for this solution, and I really appreciate all those discussions. As I've said throughout them, I unequivocally share their goal, which is to improve safety on streets, on their street, and all streets. Indeed, I fought very hard for appropriate funding and regulations to deliver unsafe, accessible, and complete streets throughout my time on council, often met with significant resistance, either from the administration or even my colleagues. I'll note, I truly found this, or find this, a difficult decision for a few reasons I'll describe, and ultimately, I won't be supporting the ordinance tonight for two main reasons. One related to equity and process, and the other related to safety. So there was a fair amount of discussion and comments about how our processes should be better, or they're broken, we need process improvement, we need to have staff and residents working together to develop consensus solutions. We had a commenter wondering why we're here at a council meeting discussing various options and pros and cons of various approaches to achieve the safety outcomes that we all want. But the reason we're here discussing it tonight is because the residents advocating for this particular solution chose not to go through the resident-led process to deal with exactly this issue. this issue, safety on their street, in a way that indeed would co-create solutions utilizing staff expertise and resident input. As has also been discussed, we have limited resources, not only in terms of capital investments, but also in terms of staff hours, and how those resources are allocated as a matter of equity should be done in a consistent and fair, fair way across the city. So, that, that concerns me. Regarding safety, you know, with all due respect for the perceptions and individual opinions of everyone, I think this body gets into trouble in potentially dangerous territory when it starts substituting its opinion for the professional judgment of the city's licensed professional engineers on matters of traffic safety. I say that as somebody who holds a civil engineering degree from the University of Illinois, which is one of the better programs in the country. I took some traffic and transportation engineering classes. It's been a while, I don't feel qualified to substitute my judgment for Mr. Seabor's on matters of traffic safety and control. We heard a number of comments about engineering guidelines or rules being guidelines, and therefore not dispositive. With some caveats, I think that's right, I agree. But so too, traffic engineering is not in fact intuitive, and the guidelines exist for a reason. To the extent that we should deviate from them, I think that professional judgment of a licensed professional engineer is crucial to making that type of decision about when to disregard the guidelines that are established in the MUTCD and by other professional associations. So, just to review, you know, a few of the concerns, that unwarranted stop signs are frequently violated, which is itself a safety hazard, because it creates a false sense of security for those at the intersection, especially pedestrians, and also erodes respect for and compliance with stop signs more generally. Also noted, unwarranted stop signs, as shown through empirical studies, are not an effective speed reduction tool along the street as a whole, so while it may decrease speeds for most complying users in immediate vicinity of the stop sign, there is a risk of actually increasing, or, sorry, increasing risk and decreasing safety further away from the stop sign on the same street. It's sort of been suggested that staff supports this as workable, or they're neutral, but I don't think that's quite accurate. To quote from the staff report, "This intersection does not meet the MUTCD guidelines for always stop control, and staff has concerns with the potential of establishing a pattern of installing always stop control at locations that do not meet the guidelines." Also is noted in the report, "The Institute for Traffic Engineers, the National Association of City Transportation Officials," and again, our own staff specifically warn against installing unwarranted stop signs. So, I think an alternative process exists, but was not followed, for how to develop the most appropriate solutions in an equitable way, given the resource constraints that we face in the city. I think, really ultimately at a high level on balance, I just have to defer to the professional judgment of the, of the engineers here. I think it's also worth noting briefly for how council should be involved in these types of questions and decisions. It's not like it's inappropriate for us to work on them, and bring resident concerns to the attention of engineering, that's part of our job, absolutely. But, I think of an example that was meant, brought up earlier, as a sort of opposite, or not opposite, but a different path, which is that Councilmember Rosenberg saw a demonstrated safety issue with respect to red on red in high pedestrian areas, and she worked with residents and city staff to work on what was an appropriate intervention. So, that's not something that city, city engineering staff were bringing on their own initiative, it was initiated by Councilmember Rosenberg. But, in fact, she worked with them to find a solution that they thought was in the best interest of the city and that staff supported. So, I think that's a different outcome, a different way for the council to approach achieving a solution that has the professional support of the engineers. Final note, I just hope that in the future, I kind of invoking what Mr. Alexander was speaking of, that when we consider ordinances and design interventions where we have seen significant crashes, and especially deaths and serious injuries, that they will find support from this body. Again, I don't mean any of my comments to disregard the seriousness with which the advocates of this ordinance treat the issue. I truly believe we all share this common safety goal. It was a difficult decision for me, but there's, for the few reasons I outlined, and a few categories of reasons, I can't ultimately support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments? Councilmember Rosenberg?
Thank you, I'm not exactly ready, but no other hands are up, okay. I want to again thank everyone for being here tonight, and especially the residents that brought this up many, many months ago. When Ms. Hatton first came to talk to me about this, I said, "Yes, yes, let's work on making this street safer for people using it," and that is still what I think. And I will say, I also said, "Yes, let's put a stop sign in there," and that is what I thought until I read the engineering report. Like many people in this room, and some have mentioned this, I drive a car, I walk, I run, I ride a bike, I'm at the intersection a lot on a running loop. But what I am not is a traffic engineer, and I am not a transportation planner, and I know that I don't know a third of what the planners and engineers know. And it's very similar to what Councilmember Flaherty said, that's why I rely on our planners and our engineers for expert advice, and that's why I take their recommendations. From the engineering report, this, this intersection does not meet the guidelines for installing additional stop signs. And it bothers me that, an idea that, you know, the studies show stop signs can actually increase speeds on a street where we don't want to do that, and in fact, we want to do the opposite, because so many people use all of those intersections to cross Maxwell. I think, as was outlined in the engineering report, traffic calming is a better way to force drivers to drive the speed limit. As some people commented tonight, I agree, the discussion tonight was really thoughtful, really good questions, really good answers, and I'm optimistic that we can work together to take broad action on our city's streets. Ms. Hatton and Elm Heights residents are bringing up real concerns, not just for this intersection, but for every city intersection. It can be, and it usually is, a little terrifying being a pedestrian or any other body not in a two-ton armored vehicle, or I guess, just a piece of metal. It's really, you're never gonna win in those situations. Mr. Seabor's concern is real too. We cannot put four-way stops at every intersection, and in fact, that's not necessarily the best way to make people getting around in always feel comfortable. What we need though, is a systems approach to make our city seriously safe and more comfortable. I am a big fan of Vision Zero, which is having a city goal that no traffic death is acceptable in city limits, and that is one of the reasons I worked with engineering for no turn on red in the downtown overlay, because although it is a very minor and tiny change in how people drive and how people can cross streets, it can save a life, and that is really what our goal should be here. I mean, something that has not even been brought up that much is that, you know, Nate Stratton was killed by a drunk driver on Walnut and 12th Street, and we have not even talked about how we stop people from driving fifty to seventy miles an hour on Walnut, and how we make sure people doing the right thing in bike lanes aren't run over and killed by a driver, right? Like, this astonishes me, and I would love, love, love to talk about solutions to keep everyone in our city alive. So, for this reason, because of my last question to Mr. Seabor, that this is not where we would be spending dollars to make intersections safer right now, I will be voting no on this.
Thank you. Additional comments? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yeah, this is a difficult decision for me as well, because I, I also feel that the professional engineers and planners should be listened to, and I do fear that putting a stop sign where the warrants are not met according to the engineering guidelines may well lead to people ignoring that stop sign, even, and making it more dangerous, because pedestrians will think that people will stop, and people will actually not stop. And then the, the speeding also, after the stops, after somebody stops, that seems to be a documented phenomenon as well. However, I, and I also, I also take to heart that there, there's, there's some process problems here, and that Ms. Hatton, who I thank very much for her advocacy, and I'm very impressed with, not every neighborhood has a Ms. Hatton, and they shouldn't have to have one. So, it's, the squeaky wheel gets the grease, and I don't, that's not the best way to govern and to allocate local dollars. All that said, I am very familiar with this intersection, I grew up going through there, you know, twice a day, and I think it is dangerous, I think something does need to be done, and I'm afraid if we don't do something with a stop sign, then it's going to take many more years before anything will be done to improve the safety of the intersection. And that's why, despite my misgivings, I will be voting in favor of the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments? Councilmember Sims?
Thank you. I want to thank everyone for their presentations, participation, thoughts. Last week, one of the things that I said, and I do want to repeat this, a public comment from Mr. Alexander about some other intersections and sidewalks, and what I said is that, I heard that, and I want to reiterate that, I heard that. And I think there's ways that we can start to spread out some of these, so that we can serve our constituents across the board as best we can. I can't do anything tonight, may not can do anything tomorrow, but I am one of nine, and I heard that, I just want you to know that. Now, I have great respect for Mr. Seabor. Back before, left, came back, worked with Mr. Copper and Broadview about some traffic stuff, one we approved by one vote from a citizen, the other got denied by one vote from a citizen. You see how this works? Many of these things I kind of look at or try to, from what is the most common sense We just approved the ED Lit, and we'll be getting, or be able to utilize that come January 1st. Why don't we just put a stop sign on every intersection in this city, 'cause we'll have the money to do that, and then Mr. Seabor will feel safe, and he won't ever feel conflicted about any other intersection in this city? It's a good solution, not very practical, or not very commonsensical, is it? I mean, there's, there's other things, you know, there's just other things that we can do. And I think, one of the things I do want to say, and I don't ever want to challenge or chastise a person so, well, I'm just not, I'm nervous when it comes to safe and unsafe. I get that, that's his profession. I've read law books, but I'm not a lawyer. I wouldn't try to practice it. I've read some traffic studies, I'm not an engineer, but here's what I do know, is that when I go up Maxwell, and I go over that crest, I feel unsafe. And I feel unsafe for people that's over that crest. And when I come back down, it's kind of the same way, to go up east and then back west, and then, and I don't know all the streets, but a couple blocks going west, as you go down, there's a four-way stop, just a couple more blocks from where we're talking about. And correct me if I'm wrong, I don't know the street, but, but it's there. I don't think the cost is prohibitive to put up stop signs there. I think if you have warning signs that says, "Your stop sign coming," you know, I think that's reasonable and practical, and probably one of the most cost-effective things that we'll do. I also would challenge, not challenge, but invite other neighborhoods, now that we're, and there's been words about process. Well, let's, I hope everyone else heard that and can use that process to begin some of these things in their neighborhoods where there's concerns, that we could advocate and maybe support. I don't know, I've got so many notes here, I just can't. It's been a great discussion, look at all them notes, I just couldn't even see them to get through to it. But I think the points that I really wanted to make, oh, one other point I really want to make before I get off here. No, Mr. Seabor was not here for the, or staff was not here last week for the Committee of the Whole meeting. And in talking with our staff and our leadership, we assumed he'd be there, I don't know if he was invited, he didn't know, I don't know if our attorney did all that. I mean, you know, yes, we'd have liked him to be there, it's not the end of the world. But not only was he not here, three of my colleagues were not either. Thank you. I will support this ordinance, thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments? Councilmember Volan?
I want to commend Ms. Hatton for the sheer amount of homework she's done for her presentation. I know what it's like to be mocked to, sometimes in this chamber, by my own colleagues for taking the kind of intensive interest in a proposal. In fact, one of the ways that I've been mocked, derided, insulted, is because I have taken as intense an interest in how we do business, our rules of procedure, as she has on this issue of a stop sign at Sheridan and Maxwell. Certainly, I know what it's like to have my concerns shrugged off and ignored. The thing that got me into politics, and I can just say one word, and many people will recognize it, was the cuckoos. Anybody remember the cuckoos on the courthouse square installed around the year 2000, that went off all night long? Cuckoo, cuckoo, cuckoo. That's right. I was one of the few people living downtown at that time, and I couldn't believe that these very loud things were going off when there were no traffic at all, no cars, no pedestrians, certainly no blind pedestrians to benefit from them. But it took the better part of a decade, even after I had become a member of this council, to finally get them calmed down to a level that I thought was appropriate for a resident of downtown. So, I know what it's like to be on the wrong end of an issue. Consensus indeed takes time, as Ms. Hatton said. But that's because when people have the votes, they don't seek consensus. She called for us to engage in dialogue. Are we? Did her, did the sponsors of her initiative really want to engage in dialogue? Councilmember Rallo called this a confusing and problematic situation. Are we going to take the time to even attempt consensus, since that's the standard that Councilmember Rallo and Ms. Hatton claimed they seek? What was more important here, to get consensus, or as Councilmember Sandberg said, to do no harm? These are mutually exclusive positions. If we believe that in order to avoid harm, we have to put a stop sign in now, then there's no time to build consensus. Councilmember Sandberg ignored the potential harm from yet another override of engineering, because the constituency for that override doesn't exist. The traffic's gonna move to another intersection, and then we're gonna be back here a year from now with another neighborhood that wants a stop sign, the next block down. So, since Councilmember Sims likes to point out that I have not been attending Committee of the Whole lately, my refusal to attend Committee of the Whole should not be taken as an opinion for or against this proposal. I've not even begun to ask questions like, why was Ms. Hatton allowed an unlimited amount of time to present? Why wasn't an equal amount of time given to the staff that my colleagues so often has hailed as being professionals when they've agreed with staff? Why weren't time limits put on question and answer periods in this meeting? Why aren't there limits being put on council? Comments? I'm going to give up my right to speak as long as I want over my cold dead body, because no time limits were put tonight. Why didn't the sponsors, who include the council president, who does the scheduling of the council, if they were sincere about addressing this issue holistically, limit the length of this meeting because this complicated systemic issue that deserves consensus building, deserved at least a third reading two weeks from today, which several of us explicitly asked for at first reading and were denied? The majority who voted for this in Committee of the Whole were the same majority who voted for it to be heard in Committee of the Whole, and not at third reading. The same majority who believe that our process is just fine. What they've proven over again tonight is that the council process is just fine for them, and any opportunity to improve the traffic process only comes up when there's a conflict like tonight. I hope neighbors have seen tonight how much more complicated the city's task is than the supposedly obvious solution, and how those voting to approve this than the supposedly obvious solution, and how those voting to approve this does nothing to fix that problem. If I stayed away from Committee of the Whole, one reason was to force a full presentation and a full discussion of this issue with all appropriate parties. But it's still not going to be possible tonight because we're already past 10:30. Again, when you don't have time limits, everyone complains about the length of meetings. But if you spread it out over more than one meeting, maybe you get that, that genuine conversation that you claim you want. If we need people who aren't here to answer our questions, will we get that opportunity before the majority forces the issue? The majority allowed the presenter an unlimited time to present. If we want to evaluate the many claims that she made, would the majority allow it? Why not invite the staff to the meeting? We've stopped legislation dead in its tracks for less than this. Nobody disagrees that the intersection couldn't be improved. The question is, which improvements, and at what cost to the public treasury and the public safety? It's not a simple problem. It's a complicated problem. The, the purveyors of the solution that appears to be the most elementary want to push that part aside, that this is complicated. And then I hear the recommendations of staff being mocked by members of the public. Always stop controls have been a concern for as long as I've served on the council. I've seen this problem before. I remember vividly the corner of Euclid and Howe. This is just another Euclid and Howe. They got a stop sign, this stop sign is going to get passed here tonight. But in the course of doing it, what damage have we done? There's no damage we've done because the process is working the way that the majority intends it to. And they've pointedly and consistently ignored the objections from those of us in the minority who say, "There's got to be a better way to do business." The residents who complained about meeting with resistance don't realize how insulting they were to the very staff whom my colleagues praised when they're in agreement with them, and who seek out their counsel when they're likely to validate their legislative ideas. Because in their minds, the only reasonable view is their own view. Mr. Seabor can't possibly be as reasonable as them. Mr. Robinson can't. That's not the nature of their job. It's why Mr. Seabor was so reluctant to invoke the word "safety", because everyone has a definite definition of it, and he's got a legal one that he has to follow. And so he's reluctant even to invoke the word that comes so easily off our lips. The harm or the penalty of putting a stop sign is that then everyone wants one. And we've made jokes about it tonight. We'll be right back here again next year with the next person who wants it. Mr. Richardson spoke about the discussion in the past tense as though it's already over. That's exactly the presumption that the sponsors were counting on, that all this was a formality, that right-thinking people will see, see the logic of the petitioners because they knew they had the most reasonable position from the outset. They can't imagine that there might be a real conversation to be had between disagreeing parties of goodwill in the middle of this process, that this process could have been the vehicle for that. But you can either have consensus or a majority. You can't have both. So I'd like people to stop using that word if, what they're really talking about is a majority. How many times have I been denied the opportunity for further inquiry because a majority didn't really care about it, according to the minority? There's been no speaker timer in use except during public comment? No limit was put on the advocates? I made friends with an anthropology professor when I first got here in the mid-'80s, during Mary Allison's term, when I came here, who taught me to question the assumptions buried in the assertions that people make. To whom is this assertion true? For what reasons is it true? And for how long will it be true? I don't think we ask those questions tonight with this. It's just all about this one intersection and these good people who came out, who have very reasonable arguments, but we're supposed to, to be held ourselves to a higher standard. I've heard the comment, "We should be listening to constituents." My question is, which ones? Which constituents should be considering? Those who are not here because they're unaffected, but will be here in a couple of years making the same arguments? Those who can't afford to be here? Those who are no longer here because the intersections where they were injured or killed do not have the same advocates? There were three pedestrians killed on Third Street in my district alone in the past two years. At least, we've addressed the intersections where they were killed. Corner of Third in Indiana, corner of Third in Washington. This is real numbers and real people. I think the most, most interesting comment tonight came from Mr. Rackley, the data analyst who spoke tonight. He said, "This process is very poor. It lacks appropriate collaborations. It doesn't consider a more holistic approach." I agree with him. That's all true. "All of this," he said, "could have been addressed as one package instead of picking one route without having full research." I think he was saying that in support of this, but that argument actually works against this proposal. The fact that the resident-led process is once a year was the best process that they could come up with. If you saw the process that we went through for 10 years before we fixed it, it would have been even worse. Everyone hated it. These things take time. They're not simple, and you, ah. Those people who are opposed to speed humps because they're ugly or inconvenient, I wish they would rethink a statement like that. Because that's not a concern about safety. That's just about ugliness and inconvenience. If we really were concerned about safety, we'd put in the most ugly and inconvenient things possible, but it's more complicated than that. If consensus was really something that the majority thought was desired here, they would have made more of an effort to provide those of us who wish to achieve consensus the time and the opportunity to do it. It's one thing to disagree with staff. I've done it a lot, and they have the scars to prove it. It's just another thing to bypass them when it's inconvenient. And mark my words, that's what it was for Mr. Rallo and the sponsors of this ordinance. It was inconvenient, both logistically and politically. They stacked the deck to ensure the outcome they wanted. This is power politics in a nutshell. Here's what I will say. I don't disagree with the neighbors. I also don't agree with them. I can't vote for this, but I don't want to vote against it. I wanted a better solution that was more nuanced, that might have been a genuine consensus. But our process, the council process, is in no way engineered to do that sort of thing. It's engineered to favor the majority. So let's not hear words like consensus anymore unless people really mean it. I will be abstaining from this vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments? I'm seeing some heads shaking. If not, I'll finish up. I agree with Councilmember Volin that this is a nuanced issue. It's not as simple and straightforward as simply putting up a stop sign, calling it a day. And I truly, truly want to applaud Ms. Hatton and all of the neighborhood residents who worked very hard to address all of those nuances. You either talked with or consulted the BPD, the Bloomington Fire Department, Monroe County Community Schools, the MUTCD. I'm impressed with the thoroughness of that. You also thought very intentionally about the nature of the intersection, the existing traffic patterns, the context of the neighborhood in general and what surrounding streets experience, and you helped us understand that better, and you worked very hard to do that. And I applaud that. I've worked on comparable issues within the district I represent. And that is exactly the kind of activity and, and investment that is wonderful to see, I think, on the part of our residents. So thank you for all of that. I do have concerns. I, I too thought staff would be here last week, and I am satisfied that it was an oversight that they were not. It was not any intentional exclusion at all, I don't believe. I also do want to note the absence of a formal fiscal impact statement. I do notice, too, that we also have talked about price tax for these various options tonight. And I am satisfied with what I've heard tonight. Ideally, I think this ordinance would have included one, and I do want to note that concern. But I am satisfied with the estimates I've heard tonight. I also want to acknowledge specific concerns about adding a stop sign. One of the things we heard is that changes in traffic patterns can throw people sometimes. They can make intersections more vulnerable. My campus office is about 50 feet from Seventh Street and the 7th Line. I get it. Every single day, I travel Seventh Street, and I get how the changing patterns there have thrown people off. I think the city did a very good job of the signage and the alerts they put to keep people aware, or to help people become as aware as possible of those changing traffic patterns. My sense is something like that is very possible here, and we've heard from Mr. Seabor that they are. So I thank you for that. I've heard, we've all heard a lot tonight about "safe." Is this safe? Can we make this intersection safe? The word "safe" to me implies some kind of guarantee, that we'll never again see an incident at this intersection. We'll never again see a pedestrian hit by a car or, or a cyclist in an accident. We can't get guarantees. And, and I, I understand that. No matter what we do, there aren't guarantees. But the question I ask is, can we make it safer? What kinds of opportunities do we have to make it safer? If not perfectly safe, I don't know that there is such an intersection, what will likely make it safer? All right? And unlike city staff, we do answer to our constituents. We do have an obligation to listen. Do we have an obligation to do every single thing we're asked to do? Of course not. Okay? But I do take seriously when someone comes to me with a well-informed, well-thought-out, intentional case for a particular course of action. With that, I'll be supporting this tonight. Thank you all. Will the deputy clerk please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmembers Scamblerie?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Flaherty?
No.
Rosenbarger?
No.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Volin?
Abstain.
Sims?
Yes.
Thank you.
So that is 6-2-1? 531, sorry. So, thank you all. With that, back to you.
No, six.
No, that's it.
You were right the first time.
Six-2-1.
I'm sorry. Six-2-1 is correct. All right, thank you. We are up against some hard stops tonight, and we have another ordinance to go. I'm going to ask our counselor to give some advice. You know, we are past the 10:30. I don't know if anybody wants to invoke that, but if we, this is an unusual ordinance in that first, we needed to take it off the table before we even began a discussion about it. So could we, at this point, talk about a motion to postpone? Or do we have to take it off the table first? Just give us some guidance.
Yes, council has options. This, this item was placed on tonight's agenda in anticipation of a motion to take from the table, so the council could simply decline, members could decline to make that motion to take from the table, in which case the item would not be discussed tonight. If it is discussed, our local code provides that a two-thirds, two-thirds vote of council is required after 10:30 to introduce the item for action. I will note, the petitioner, Michael Cordero from Peerless Properties, is on the call, has been waiting. I believe Peerless Properties has a proposal related to this item on the Public Works, Board of Public Works' agenda for next Monday. So if the council wishes to hear from him, I know he's on the call and can speak to the impact of a delay of this item beyond tonight. But happy to answer any, any additional questions. Again, a motion to take from the table, I think, is required to put this in front of the council, so if no motion is made, we would simply proceed with the next agenda item.
All right. Just to be clear, is your, is your suggestion that we maybe hear from the petitioner first before we do any action?
If, if that's helpful for the council's decision on how to proceed. I know Mr. Cordero's on the call, and I'm sure he'd be happy to speak to what they've got lined up following tonight with the Board of Public Works.
All right. Mr. Cordero, are you there?
I, I apologize. He was on the call, and I hadn't made him co-host. He should now be able to unmute and enable video if needed.
Hello, good evening, everybody. Thank you for hearing our manner again. As Mr. Lucas had mentioned, we are on the Board of Public Works' agenda for November 7th, which would be the next step in this process. After tonight's hopeful, you know, hopefully positive vote from the council members, we would be going to the Board of Public Works to offer to dedicate the new right-of-way. So that would be up for discussion on the 7th. So if this gets postponed, we would have to, once again, reschedule with the Board of Public Works. And I guess shift the whole process down until we can be on the city council agenda.
All right. Well, thank you for that, and then I guess back to the council as to what we want to do.
I, I will just note, in case it's helpful, I believe the next Board of Public Works meeting after the 7th is November 22nd. So should the council wish to not hear this tonight, again, it could simply be left, and no motion could be offered to take from the table. If a member wished to take some other action, I think we would, we would need to take it from the table to place it in front of the council before any other motion to postpone to a specific night. So happy to talk through scenarios.
But if, if we don't hear any motion, we just don't hear it, and we move on to the next piece of the agenda. Is that correct?
That's correct. And in that, that event, the council president could schedule it again for a later meeting, again, in anticipation of a later motion to take from the table at some point in the future. Before I make a motion, I, Jared. Do you, as president, favor hearing at the next regular session?
That would be a consideration that we would have to take up in scheduling. Either that or some sort of special session that we can get in. We've got a lot on the agenda coming up.
All right. And I won't make a motion. Thank you.
All right. So if there's not going to be a motion, then this item will not be heard this evening. And we will take that up when we need to as to how we dispatch with this. So at this point, let us move on to legislation for first readings.
Madam President, I move that ordinance 2223 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 22-33 to amend Title 10 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled, quote, wastewater, unquote, rate adjustment. The synopsis is, this ordinance amends the rates and charges in Title 10 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled, quote, wastewater, unquote, to meet revenue requirements for operation and maintenance expenses, ongoing debt service payments, and capital improvements to the wastewater collection and treatment system, including ongoing modernization and efficiency improvements, and mechanical screen replacement at the Dillman Wastewater Treatment Plant, mechanical rehab and replacements, plant hydraulic expansion, and end-of-life equipment replacement at Lucha Pool Wastewater Treatment Plant, and ongoing system improvements throughout the collection system, including installation of additional lift stations and interceptors, and, I'm sorry, I and I reduction, and on the ongoing sewer lining project. The rate adjustment will be implemented in two phases as follows. A 12% increase effective January 1st, 2023, and a 6% increase effective January 1st, 2025.
Thank you. And this will be referred to the regular session on November 16th.
Madam President, I move that ordinance 2234 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. And will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 22-34 to amend Title 10 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled, quote, wastewater, unquote, stormwater rate adjustment. The synopsis is, this ordinance amends Title 10 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled, quote, wastewater, unquote, by amending Section 10.08.045, rates, stormwater utility users by increasing the stormwater fee from $5.95 to $7.50, an increase of 26%, to allow for appropriate funding of necessary improvements to the stormwater system, which includes additional design work, repairs, and construction of the Hidden River Culvert System and Spankers Arch, as well as open channel improvements to Clear Creek, which are all intended to reduce flooding in the downtown area.
Thank you very much. This, too, will be referred to the regular session on November the 16th. And with that, we are to additional public comment for matters not on the agenda that were not spoken about in our first round.
Good evening, council and distinguished staff. I first want to speak, oh, I'm Christopher M. G. from the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. Tonight, I first want to speak to you about the feasibility study that was conducted by the Trahan Group, where I was honored to participate in one of the focus groups. The arts go a long way toward our quality of life and remain an economic engine in this community. One of the areas that echoed our view at the chamber was that a new One of the areas that echoed our view at the chamber was that a new arts center was not a viable project moving forward. The Waldron and the Buzzkirk Theater remain unique core assets in this community. We had hoped the report would have gone further to make a decisive recommendation for city capital improvement investment in the performing arts centers. We should never lose sight of taking care of what we have and not simply look for the next big project. Now, if you look to your board, that we have a beautification that I spoke about two weeks ago at the last regular session. I'm not going to define beautification, but sort of put it in a broad sense. I would really, I want to preface my remarks first that I am not condemning the city's award-winning Parks and Recreation Department. The department remains a crown jewel in our municipal government. However, we shall see tonight some visual examples that do not do the wonder of this great city. Next slide. See, we look a little bit there at some planters and some plants, and what we see here is not something that I think captures the visual wonder of the city. We see some weeds around there. The one planter looks nothing like a curb, while the other one does look at a cross at a stoplight, looks a little bit better, but still a little drab. And you see, there's just a little bit of just green plants. Next one there. Thank you, Stephen. Here we have another one where it's just, it's the native species, but it does not look exactly inviting nor colorful, with a very low planter there and a sort of different-colored stone that still looks a little drab. Next slide. Then we have another two examples that look similar to that. We barely use any of the planter in that one on the left, and the right one is still just kind of there and blah. Next one. Just a note on these, which, these were taken in June of 2020. So the chamber at that time had been met with several business owners and councilperson Steve Volin to talk about the Creed District and how to use those funds. So this is how the beautification was agreed upon, is way to use these funds, invest that money back into the districts, district, through planners, lighting, awnings, et cetera. Next slide. There we have one. Now, the one on the left, in fairness, is the county building, the current site of the Judicial Center. And the right one, we see sort of that, again, the low planter, all green, and it's just a shade of color, but at least that one is a full one. Next slide. There we have, and this is CFC's properties, where now they're not using some native species, but they are using, but they are using some great color, and that is on the south side of the square, so I wanted to use that as an example. Now, the one on the left, in fairness, is from last month. Next slide. Now, there we have our sister city Palo Alto, California, which the mayor, I believe, is set to do a historic visit there with a contingency that I hope those on that trip look at Palo Alto, who has put some investment into the beautification and the look of their downtown area in that. So what these sort of brings us back to those Creed funds on number 922 on your budget schedule. It has a balance of $10.5 million, and we talked a lot about funding. Well, where's the funding coming from? How much is that going to cost? Well, these are funds that were collected from businesses within that district with the intent to invest it back into the community revitalization enhancement or a Creed district. So we're capturing this money, and we want to put it then back into the district. I'm using beautification as an example of that, that businesses would get a lot out of, tourism would get a lot out of. I'm not telling the administration nor the council how to spend those Creed funds, but just to invest it back, and I believe beautification is that, is where to put those monies. So I don't want to make a mockery of the Creed district and just leave it in a general fund. So, you know, next session, maybe I'll bring some more examples of some alleyways and some lighting that we could do as well. But I thank the council for their time tonight. And just since I have 12 seconds, reminder, we have our community conversation on justice reform on the 15th. I think a couple of councilperson Piedmont Smith and council president Sandberg have signed up for it, and I thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. M.G. Thanks for staying with us. And is there anyone else from Zoom that might be wanting to make a public comment? We didn't ask.
I see no hands raised at the moment. I'll extend the invitation to the folks still on Zoom. If you'd like to offer comment and haven't already at the earlier session, please use the raise hand feature to indicate you'd like to speak.
And seeing none popping up.
I see no hands shooting up.
Let us move to our council schedule. Now, we don't have any items for a committee to hold for November the 9th, and I don't know if that's a discussion we might have about putting ordinance 22-15 back on the agenda, or do we want to just have that discussion later?
That's up to the council. I will say, Mr. Cordero has dropped off the meeting, so I'm not sure of his availability. But if the council wishes to cancel next week's meeting, it could certainly do that, and should cancel the committee meeting. If the council wants to use next week as an opportunity to discuss ordinance 22-15, it could schedule a special session to do so.
All right. What's the will of the council?
I move that we cancel the committee to hold meeting for November 9th.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on that? Then let us, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, so we are canceled for next week. What else is on our agenda? Do we have a work session?
Word of order? Did Mr. Lucas mean that if you wanted a special session for the 15th, you need to do that by motion, too?
No, we need to have.
For the 9th.
For the 9th, I mean.
That's one option, to schedule a special session. The council president can also call for a special session.
Okay, okay, thank you.
All right, so if we are dispatched with the committee to hold, we've got a work session coming up Friday?
Yes, a work session is scheduled for this Friday, so I'd like to gauge the interest in holding that work session. There are several items that may be ready. Two I know of are an end-of-the-year appropriation ordinance that the administration typically prepares and brings to the council to balance departments' budgets before the end of the year. A second item, which is, I believe, two separate items of legislation, is a change to the city's Human Rights Commission. One change would move that work out of the city legal department to community and family resources. A related change, separate change, would combine the city and county human rights commissions. I believe this topic was previewed during the budget discussions. So these items of legislation are nearing their, nearing being ready for council consideration. Director Vic Kelson of Utilities has also offered to attend the work session in the event the council wants to hear a preview of the two items that were just introduced tonight for first reading. I know that's a little out of the council's practice, but given there's no committee discussion scheduled for those, he offered to attend the work session this Friday. Those are the items I know of. There may be others that come up between now and Friday, but at this point, if I could get some indication from council members as to whether we should.
I will be attending.
I see two.
Well, let's go ahead and have it. I do believe in work sessions, so if anybody else can join us, great, but I want to know more about those topics, so. All right, anything else?
No, I don't believe so.
All right, very good. So let's have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good night.